Folks, it is It is 6:10, sorry for our tardiness. Calling to the January 13th, 2022, Civil and Regional School Committee meeting. We are being recorded this evening, thank you very much. I'll begin by asking for any public participation. Seeing none?
Oh, Sheila.
Oh, I'm sorry, I could not see you, Sheila.
Anything more? Come here.
Okay, so I'm just wanting to make sure that this is I just wanted to come tonight. I have been trying to leave my class for the remaining months of civil law from this July. So I have given my dad a long vacation. But I just wanted to give you a break. Kingston had made a law that I have allowed that we need to be able to have public participation. And people are recording, which we're supposed to be able to have that personally. And the teacher just reached out to me, so I wanted to make sure that everybody knew. Just because it is, we voted on how we do cases in elementary. Also, we do it by approving and we don't know what works or not. But I just wanted to know if you can relate to it, just because I don't like to not gather the public. Again, we've got a difficultly diverse topic because we are you know, like how to do that as well. But cases in these things, I want to know.
Okay.
Thank you, Sheila, I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything else? Seeing none? Approval of the minutes. December 2nd start of the regular minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes from December 2nd, 2021.
Your second?
I'll second that.
If I could just make one comment about them. Under the Assistant Superintendent's section, I know Gordon Had chatted a bit about some analysis of different programs, software that we might use, homework, et cetera. And it was a bit of a lengthy discussion. I would just have that noted in that section if you could. History Minister. Secretary of Defense.
She said that she was doing it after the recording.
Okay, all right, very good. That was my one comment. Any edits or comments by anybody else? No? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Okay, very good, thank you. Now, the executive session minutes on the same date. People have looked at this, there's a motion to possibly vote. Okay.
So we don't need to hold?
So we can release it? Okay, I'll move to, I only have December 2nd in front of me in my pile. Am I missing?
Oh, yeah, that's
Yeah, that's it, but there's two dates here. Oh, wait, no, there isn't, just kidding. All right, I move to approve and release the executive session minutes from December 2nd.
Your second?
I'll second, Chris.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Aye? Anybody opposed? Upstayed? Moving on, we have the Level and Course Change Request Policy.
Sure, good evening. I was asked to review our student handbook to ensure that our practice aligns with what our written policy is stated in our handbook in regards to students who request to drop a course or change a level. Our handbook currently states that students cannot change their schedule after the start of school until the end of the first term. Historically, I think it's important to note that we have always made special considerations for students. Five years ago, we developed a course change request form for these considerations and have dozens of examples of students who have requested to drop or change a course or level after the first day of school and within 24 to 48 hours, we've made that change in collaboration with the teacher, department leader, and parent. But to better align our practice with the written policy, I'm proposing we update the language to include what is written in red and delete what has a strike through it. There's a handout, I think it's the last one in your packet. This would match our current practice, which allows an administrator to approve a change before the end of the first term. I've also provided you all with a copy of the form we use to review these student requests. There have been very few instances when we have not approved a change, and in all of those cases, it's been a decision reached in coordination with the student and parents based on our recommendation on what is best for a student. Based on this, I'm requesting the school committee approve the updated language to our handbook to support what we currently practice.
Michaela, I don't think we saw the changes in our packets.
So it should be the last page, just some red writing. Have an extra copy if you need one, Paula, I can pass it down. Pass that over?
Is this similar to the dress code where it would just go live effective immediately because the handbook is an electronic document?
Absolutely, yep.
I can have one, do you have? Yeah, I got it last night. Does anyone have any questions for Principal Gill on this? Seeing none? Would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the edited Level and Course Change Request Policy.
One second, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Food Service Policy.
Hello, I'm Megan Aaronholz. I'm the Food Service Director for the district. So we are, this is a offer versus serve policy. So we're having an administrative review for Halifax this year. So this is one of the pieces that we have to upload as part of our review. And essentially, it's something that we've always done in practice, but we just have to have in writing. So, and because it's a policy, it is something that we wanted to share with the public and put on the SLRSDschoolmeals.com website. And so, before putting something that has the word "policy" on our website, I just wanted to make sure that all parties were aware of what it is. So back in 2010, there's a Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. So that's essentially when these guidelines went into place. Essentially saying that when I plan the menus, I have to plan them for lunch, taking five food components, the kids have to take three out of those five, one of which is a half cup of fruit or vegetable. So this is just essentially putting that into writing and making it official.
Does anyone have any questions on it?
Question. I'm assuming that the three elementary school committees and us all need to vote this policy? Or is this just a regional?
It would be, it is in effect, I mean, we are doing it. It's a USDA rule, so we are doing it at all of the three elementary schools plus the regional. So, and where the website encompasses all of them, I'm just going to put it on there as that website. So I do plan on, I presented at Kingston earlier, and then plan on presenting for Halifax and Plimpton as well.
And Kingston voted it, they did a committee vote? Or no, just?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I just had a technical question. On the first page, the breakfast side, the big bold in the middle says, "Select at least three food items, one of which must be half cup of fruit or juice," which seems to align with the paragraph before that. But on the back side, it says "fruit or juice," but I was wondering if I should say "fruit or vegetable?" Because it seems like it's, they have to choose.
That is, that is true. That is correct. It should be half cup of fruit or, fruit or vegetable. That is correct. So yes, that should be amended. Thank you.
So this has come up more so in the elementary school. I don't know about the high school so much or middle school, but there's been an issue where like a child brings their own lunch and then just wants some milk, and the parent's being charged for milk even though if the kid got the whole meal, they wouldn't be charged at all. And so, I guess my concern is, what we're going to have happen is, now that the cat's out of the bag, that you can get the whole shebang, the kid's going to throw away the entire lunch and keep the milk because they don't want to pay for, like, can you explain to me why a kid just can't get a milk for free, but we're going to give them a milk and three food items for free?
So it's the USDA oversees the National School Lunch Program. And essentially, each meal that we provide to a student that meets this meal pattern, we get a reimbursement from the federal government and the state government. So USDA does not allow us to provide just a milk to a student and get that full reimbursement, which is why they want us to provide at least three out of those five food groups, because they want to make sure that if they're paying for a full meal, that a student's getting as close to a full meal as possible. So again, they can, a student can take everything on, that's on the menu. They can take the grain, the protein, the fruit, the vegetable, and the milk. So, I mean, it is, it is true, that is one of those things that people say, well, they're going to, it's a lot of waste if they take everything and they just throw out the whole meal away and they keep the milk. But what we've found is most students don't do that. If a student does have a meal from home, what we encourage them to do is to just come through the line and take a fruit, a vegetable to complement their meal from home, and a milk. So that way, they're still getting some of the, you know, more nutritious parts of the meal along with the milk, and it can go with the meal from home. They don't have to eat it, but that way they can get the milk for free. But again, the federal government just will not allow us, to pay us the full price for the meal for just a milk.
I just don't see that as being very efficient. I find it to be incredibly wasteful. You know, I understand where you're coming from. I just think that that's like, one of those things that's like, really?
And I think the logic behind it was probably that if they at least take three out of the five, they take the fruit, they take the vegetable, they take the milk, even if they take one bite, that's still some of that good nutrition that they're getting. Not ideal, but as I mentioned at the Kingston meeting, pre-COVID, what we, what we did, we had shared tables. So again, more so on the elementary level, but if a student took a package of apples and a package of carrots, anything that was sealed, we could put that in the shared table, and then students who wanted it could come up later and grab it. So that way, that student could have that milk, and then that fruit and vegetable wouldn't just be thrown away, it could still be eaten by somebody. But again, with COVID, that, we haven't really practiced that.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to accept the policy?
I'll make a motion to accept the policy as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye? Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We haven't seen you for a while at our meetings. I think it's been pre-COVID.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, thank you, you as well.
Principal's report.
Thank you. Would it be all right with the chair if our student council representative spoke first, and then I can tie into the points that he's sharing this evening?
Certainly.
Great, all right. Connor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm just here to provide a little update about what's been going on at our school this past month, and what we have, of course, now and moving forward in January. So in December, right before the break, we were able to revive the old tradition of a student versus staff basketball game. In order to receive a ticket to the game, you had to bring in $5 or 10 non-perishable food items. When we had tallied everything together, as a school, we were actually able to raise over $850 worth of non-perishable food items that we then donated, donated to the Plymouth Area Coalition for the homeless. It was a close game, but ultimately, the students came out victorious, but everyone had a good time. And as for this month, the major talking point with student council and around the student body is, of course, the mid-year exams coming up next week. Due to everything that's been going on, the Student Council Executive Board had sent out a form, a survey to its members earlier this week, asking for their opinion on whether the mid-year exams should go on as previously scheduled. The results of the survey was a pretty resounding no. Most of the responses touted COVID-related absences of both their peers and their teachers, as well as the concerns of students missing mid-years and the complications that would arise with making them up. Another such concern a student had was the differing learning points that students are at in their respective classes. Those who had extended absences were finding that they were at an academic disadvantage compared to their peers who had not missed any class time in the past few weeks. A student in an AP level course also remarked that taking a traditional mid-year in a year in which progress towards learning that material for their AP exam had been stalled would only further hinder the teacher's ability to get through the necessary curriculum for the exam by May. But perhaps the most common response was the concerns raised by students over the negative mental health effects that these exams might create. As previously mentioned, the widespread absences have caused students to have large amounts of makeup work to do in little time to do so, to prepare for the exams. And it has led to an increase in stress and anxiety amongst students in the student body. And the student council, who directly represent the student body, are in favor of the proposal given to you, that will be given to you for your consideration tonight by Principal Gill. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. So to piggyback on what Connor highlighted, obviously, we have a concern with our traditional mid-year exam scheduled this year. Last Thursday, just to give an example, we had over 200 students who were absent from school, which is, you know, 20% of our student population. Staff absences are at an all-time high. Again, these are all primarily related to COVID absences. Last week, we had 55 positive cases to date. The highest number in a week for us was 11. Since January 3rd, we're now up to 103, and that's just positive cases, that doesn't include any close contacts at this time. And as we continue to focus and emphasize social-emotional learning of our students, I think it's important to consider a change to our traditional mid-year evaluation. And so, with input from our students, from our teachers and our department leaders, we are proposing that mid-year exams not be counted as 20% of the semester grade, and that instead of traditional mid-year assessments, we use that time to prioritize instruction and provide academic support for students who are in need. So this change would be no change to our school calendar. We would still have three early release days next week, but we would be able to increase instructional time, because instead of 90 minutes of an exam period, we will have 90 minutes of an extended block that all students would be required to attend as part of a normal school day. There's no harm to students who are doing well, but it does provide a safety net for those who are falling and need remedial support, time to make up tests and quizzes or assignments, time to get one-to-one or small group academic support, or extra help to close learning gaps from long-term absences. Some courses may still elect to hold end-of-term assessments, but it will not count as 20% of their semester grade. It will be a regular term-two assignment that would be calculated as if it's another unit or test. It's an opportunity for us to catch as many of our students up as we can before we start a new semester, so that they have a fair opportunity to finish the year strong. We would have several incentives for students, the first being that we would have two bus dismissals. So there would be the traditional early release dismissal at 10:40, but then our buses would be back at the traditional, or the normal release at 1:58. They'd pick up the middle school, come over and get any students who would need to be picked up. So it is fair and equitable. It doesn't exclude students who don't drive or don't have a parent or guardian who could pick them up. In addition to that, lunch will be provided. I know Megan just scooted out, but she has put together a power pack menu for students. They can either grab and go, or they can sit in the cafeteria and take a little bit of a break before they report to their academic support. And we have NHS tutors and paraprofessionals who would be available for additional support with academic study skills and organization. It's a unique opportunity to support our students' well-being as we enter year three of these uncontrollable and never-ending times. We've also, you know, we've begun the conversation of what does this look like for final exams, but at this point, that's not on the table for consideration. I think we're just trying to make it through these next couple of weeks as we see an extremely high number of cases coming our way and the incredibly high absence rate that we're faced. Regardless of whether or not we have final exams, we would need to take a look at how we calculate semester-two grades, otherwise, there would be an unfair advantage with final exam grades weighing more than they should. But we have a little bit more time to figure that math out, and we could present that as early as March to the school committee for consideration. So I guess at this time, I'm asking that our school committee members trust their educational leaders and make a motion to temporarily update our student handbook to allow us to calculate the semester-one grade based on two equally weighted terms without a 20% mid-year exam factored in.
Go ahead.
So I have a quick question. So I know you said there's a lot of absences, and maybe it's too early to know this, but how long are most of the kids out? Are they relatively short, or is there a lot of extended absences?
So with the new guidelines since we returned from winter break, most of them on average are about five days. But if students are still symptomatic and not feeling well, they do last up to 10 days. And I shared an example earlier today, I'll share this again, but you could have had, there are several students who were out 10 days prior to winter break, we then had a week off of school, and then even though they may have been able to return on January 3rd, they may now have two or three teachers who are out for up to five days. And so, the window of time to really prepare them for this type of an exam is very narrow.
I have like 500. And I already had a conversation with Michaela, too. What would be the impact of postponing the midterm?
I think, anyway, that's a great question. It's a conversation we had had as well with our department leaders. The biggest, I think, obstacle is now we're extending term two, and we're shortening term three, which historically is shortened anyway with snow days that time of year. And then we're impacting, you know, our seniors who are out a little bit earlier. So I think it just condenses the semester for them and their experience and their opportunity to finish strong.
Okay. I had a couple of concerns that I had expressed to Ms. Gill earlier. Some of them being that I'm really having, I'm truly struggling with this. I completely am sympathetic, and I understand that this is an issue. My own daughter came home in tears about it. I get it, she's a junior. But the reason I'm having some reservations is, like, the real world doesn't stop because all of this madness is going on, and my fear is that we are not adequately preparing our juniors and our seniors for college when they go to college and they say, you know, "Tough cookies, this is how it goes, the midterm is on this day, you better be prepared for it." I do sympathize with the kid is out and then they comes back and the teacher's not there. I think that's probably, to me, the most thing that I can see can be a struggle for our students. I have some concerns that we spend time on surveys, we're going to spend time, you know, taking MCAS. That's all time away from valuable learning, that, in my opinion, is instructional time that's being taken away from our students by participating in these surveys and things like that. I question if we're going to be advocating to potentially not have our students take MCAS this year, or be held harmless and make it optional. But we're, and if we're going to make them take the MCAS, and I understand that that decision might not necessarily be in our hands, but if it is in our hands, are we going to advocate equally on behalf of our students to not have them participate in MCAS because we're taking away valuable in-house instructional, instructional time in the classroom? And I understand that we don't teach the test, and I get that, but I just feel like that's, in my opinion, and I'm sure it's not, you know, universal, that's wasted time. And so I'm struggling with this because I feel like we've catered to our children the last couple of years, and I know that it's been very difficult for everyone, whether they're working, or they're in school, or they're a college student. I mean, my own sister's in college and struggling with the same thing. But I just get, where is the point where we stop bending for them? You know, and it's like, let's go, guys, this is reality now, and you're big kids. Like, college doesn't care about whether or not you're having anxiety over your midterm. You know, are we setting our kids up for failure by essentially babying them now? So that's just where I'm at. I still haven't made my decision. I am really, I see both sides of this coin, and I guess I'm just wondering if I could get some input from the rest of the committee, especially those who have kids, whether they're in college or in the high school. Unfortunately, I think I'm the only one on the stage that has a child in this school at Silver Lake, but I don't know. I guess I'm looking for some feedback.
So, I know you might fall off your chair, but I am in complete agreement with Summer. I think that this is a really complicated topic, and I want to be supportive of our students because of the social-emotional learning issues, the anxiety. I mean, I want to minimize, though, I have college students, and they are at their wit's end.
Yeah. Are they taking, I don't mean to interrupt you, but are they still on schedule for taking any kind of exams and anything like that? They're not, it's not being waived because of the circumstances of the world right now?
We didn't have a surge during this first semester, though. The fall semester, like in my kid, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but like where my kid went to school, they didn't have outbreaks. So they didn't lose out on their lectures or classes or their coursework. They had their exams in December, but they hadn't missed any classes the entire semester. So I think the problem here is
It's come after the
The kids have missed school, the teachers are missing school. A friend of mine said that her daughter went to school and only had two classes with teachers. The rest
Here?
So, I mean, I remember high school, and I know when my kids were here last year, you know, that would be pretty stressful leading into midterms, for me. So I mean, for me, I support this change, but
I do, I do feel that the way that our academic calendar is set up into four terms in which the second term doesn't end until after winter break any year regardless, I understand why it exists, but it makes it problematic because you do have that gap between, you know, that winter break, and you're always having exams about a week and a half or two weeks after you come back. And I just think that that's problematic in general, regardless of COVID or not COVID, because, yeah, theoretically, they've got 10 or 12 days to prep for their exams that they know are coming up, but, you know, I was in high school once.
Yeah.
But I really do firmly believe that these kids are going through something right now that is just existential, that we, is just beyond what we would experience normally. And so I totally understand your issue. My question, I guess, Michaela, is there are semester-long classes, or two-term long classes, and there are year-long classes. So how would this impact the students that were taking semester-long elective classes? Would they just not have to take essentially a final exam for their elective?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if I recall, my bad, I'm terrified, I might just muse on a little bit here. The last two years, correct me if I'm wrong, we did not have final exams for really valid reasons, right? I mean, clearly, the first year was just more chaos than anybody could ever imagine. Then last year, we made a special dispensation because of all the other things. We were doing remote, and then we went to hybrid, I mean, we went to hybrid, then we went back in person, and it was complicated. I guess for me, I'd be really hopeful that we don't do that again this year, and that that's not coming back to us. At some point, I agree with Summer, we have to kind of figure out a way to get back to, maybe to new normal. And I know that we've asked you guys a lot about, what did you learn, what can we change, and things like that, and I totally am on that. But I can see this as a special circumstance, so I'm sort of inclined to approve it, especially considering students, and I appreciate Connor, your survey that you all did and brought back. On the flip side, you know, nobody likes taking these things. But I can understand you're in a special situation, and I appreciate, first of all, you all organizing, and second of all, coming and talking to us about it because it's really important
Thank you.
That we hear that. And I'm glad, I was actually, the question I was going to ask you, I had a student come to me through their parent, and I'm like, why don't they go to their school committee rep that's a student? And apparently, you all did that. school committee rep that's a student? And apparently, you all did that, which I commend tremendously. So I'm sort of inclined to vote for it, but I have the same reservations that, similar reservations that Summer did about setting a precedent for this situation. So I'm kind of torn.
I'm inclined to vote for it. I have similar reservations. I mean, MCAS conversation aside, I would have our kids never take any MCAS if they-
Me too.
-go, and that would be a totally different conversation. So the loss of learning time. But I do think, I worry about the resiliency, and I, I know we've talked a lot about social, emotional learning and supporting students, and I think particularly the grades that we are the school committee of has been impacted, in my opinion, harder than any other grades during this pandemic, just by the nature of their age and developmental abilities and things like that. And I get nervous. You read a lot about kids entering college feeling unprepared and mental health issues in colleges that are happening where there's not the same support systems we have here. So I do get nervous about that. That aside, I'm actually not an advocate. I would be happy if you said you wanted this to be the policy forever. I don't, I don't believe that we should have 20% of a grade be a midterm or final end of conversation. So if you were like, hey, let's do this forever, I'd be in favor of that. So I differ from both of you in that aspect. But I guess I, I do worry, this seems like a Band-Aid solution to a larger issue of resiliency and problem solving. I mean, but, but I get the problem. Like, my daughter's in the elementary school. She missed 11 days between Christmas and Thanksgiving. Like, that's like two-thirds of the time she missed. And then, you know, because she was exposed, and then she had, you know, so like, I get that kids have been out a lot. So I don't know that I have a solution, but like, I hope we're also thinking about, and it sounds like you are, like that during this time, we're talking about how do we help kids face hard things and come through them and be prepared for the real world? Because while some parts of my job, I do get special dispensations of saying, hey, it's COVID. Like, you get an exception. Also, it's like, hey, it doesn't matter that you have COVID actively. Like, you have a meeting tomorrow, and you have to present, and this matters. And so I don't, I don't have, I mean, just a contribution, I don't have an answer, but I hope that we keep considering that, I guess, in ways to keep building that resiliency among young people because the world's not that kind sometimes.
And I think to both of those points, Emily, you know, the first is, there is a trend in many high schools where they are eliminating the traditional mid-year and final exam schedule, and they're replacing it with project-based learning, term assessments, right, that are happening more regularly throughout the school year, research paper-type assessments, which does mock and mimic what we're seeing at the college level. So there is a trend, and this may be an opportunity for us to experience that, and maybe there is a focus on that moving forward. And then in terms of building student resiliency, I mean, obviously, that's one of our core values. It's something that we focus on. But in this case, I would liken it to, you know, we're not going to beat a horse when it's down. That's not going to teach a lesson in resiliency. We have plenty of other ways that we can do that, and I, I think that's something that we are dedicated to as a staff to helping our students with. And will some kids see it as a free pass? Absolutely. Right? Some kids are going to be like, great, now I don't have to study. I didn't miss any school. This is, this is, I'm going to have the whole week off, right? Or, you know, half days off. But I think what's important for us to advocate for those students who are flailing right now for reasons that are beyond their control, right? If this were, you know, students who missed school in September, October, well, you should have caught yourself up by now, right? But we're talking about kids who have missed extended periods of time in December and January for reasons outside of their control, so short to this exam period. And so that's why I'm advocating for this change.
I was just going to add something, just anecdotally, about my two youngest kids who are freshmen and a sophomore. My youngest son hadn't had a final in two and a half years, and he went through finals in nursing school in December. We thought he was going to break down. Leading up into it, we were worried about it. He was fine. He went through it. I mean, he had stress, but it was no worse than like we did when we were in college. And I think they've had enough tests and enough final exams and MCAS over the years, and enough preparation that I think they were okay. I think some schools still do midterms rather than project-based.
Yep.
So I think, you know, if we're going to get rid of them permanently, you might want to consider that as well, that not all colleges do that. But, but he did, they both survived. So, and, but I know some kids at some schools are having a much harder time. Like, WPI right now is actually having a really hard time. We have friends with kids there. But that goes far beyond that. It's all their other measures that they have in place during this pandemic that are difficult. So I think all these kids have different experiences depending on where they go. But I think, at least for mine, they had a good base here, you know, Kingston K through 12 and Silver Lake. So they kind of bounced back.
I do think 20% is a huge, huge part of their grade. I mean, instead of just waiving the fine or the midterms, was there a conversation about maybe we make it 10% of the grade? Maybe we make it a regular exam grade and not an actual midterm? So the kids, because like, I know when I went through college and I took an exam, like a midterm or a final, every single one of those questions that I got wrong on those tests are the answers I now know, and they're burned into my brain because I know that I was like, oh, I should have known that. So I feel like we're, it's a detriment for these kids not to take, to not know what they don't know. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I think that's what this plan allows. It gives us that flexibility. So you will still have, and as we put in there, that extended block time. Some teachers will still elect to have end-of-term or end-of-course assessments, but they're not going to be weighed as heavily. And, you know, we wanted to give teachers as much autonomy to know. They know their classes, right? And they know what they have and haven't been able to cover by now. So if I'm a teacher, and hey, the majority of my kids have been here, like, we're going to still do this assessment. It's not going to be weighed 20%, but we're still going to do this assessment so I can get a sense of where everybody is mid-year. But then I also, as a teacher, have the ability to say, hey, like, more than half of my class has been out for, you know, the two weeks before Christmas, or the last week and a half, or I've been out, right? That gives me the opportunity to use this extended period of time to, instead of give you an assessment, we're going to do more informal check-ins, or we're going to do a project-based assignment that wraps up everything we've done this semester. You know, I have more flexibility with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes as presented.
One second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, we need to say who made the motions because she said she's going to watch-
I've been writing them down.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Because she can't see who's speaking.
Right.
I have one more question.
You're welcome. I'm sorry.
I just have one more question.
Okay.
I just didn't know how this impacted teachers, because typically, the afternoon is when you would be grading your assessment. So I know it says there was like the academic support block. Are teachers being given time for planning during that, or?
Yep. So we, we had, we talked at length about, do we assign specific times for certain subjects? This way, everybody, teachers also get some planning time. But ultimately, in conjunction with our teachers, we agreed to leave it an open block so that students had the most opportunity for flexibility, right? So that if a student were still out, if it was day five on Wednesday, and they could only come in on Thursday and Friday, you know, once they were cleared to return, they had the most flexibility to meet with teachers. And our staff felt comfortable working around our student's schedule and building in their own time. And they'll also have that extended block when they don't have a class. They have that time for additional planning. So we agreed to focus it on our students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we go, I know, Michaela, you always do a great job of working with your staff on coming up with whatever the solutions you're bringing to us. But I'd love to hear from SLEA on their thoughts on, on this, if John's interested.
Oh, I was just asking how we feel about it.
Yeah.
I was super anxious. Do they have more to do with it?
Hi. What do you want to know, Zan?
Nothing. I just want to know if you guys are, what you all think about this.
I mean, yeah, the teachers are for it. We feel the same, that the students would not be liberal right now. But I can use myself as an example. Like, my senior sister's been working on this long-term research paper project that was going to be their midterm grade. It'll now go on term three, but my freshmen are more than capable of taking the midterm where they're at right now. So I am willing to give it, but again, it'll be a break for term three. So for me, it's not really affecting anything. They're still doing the assignments. It's still being graded. So it's just not being weighted. That really was not fair for them, and that's kind of a factor.
Okay, thanks.
Can I answer any other questions for anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you, though.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All righty. All those in favor of this change, temporary change?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask one quick question, follow up on that? Just because you mentioned temporary change. So now, are we going to have to vote next year to reinstate this policy, or is it, is there a deadline to just apply to this year?
I asked for motion to temporarily update for January 2022. So any, if there are any future changes, I would have to bring it back to the-
Okay.
-the school committee. Yep.
Thank you.
And I will have to come back in March, too, to-
My daughter-
I got to do some math first, though.
Very difficult for you. You all, very hard. You don't have, you said yes, and you think it's really, you know, more than just, very hard for you.
So I believe they approved the motion that we would not have mid-year exams this year, so we can change our grade calculation.
And it's temporary, just for this year.
And it's temporary. Thank you all for your support. I appreciate it.
So I just have a question on your geno schedule?
Mm-hmm.
So it appears, and correct me if I'm wrong, that essentially, this school year, we've gone back to the traditional schedule? Is that correct? The traditional seven period?
This year, yep.
Revolving. So we didn't, you didn't make any changes based on what we learned last year from block schedules?
No, but the Bell Schedule Committee has been meeting this year to make some changes. We just not have the capacity to do that before August, though, of this year. But yep, they've been meeting, they've met probably six or seven times. They have another meeting coming up next week. And we're hopeful that if not for next school year, the following school year, we will have a proposal for a new Bell schedule.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yep.
I'm sure it's possible to get an update on their progress. I'm just sort of a little taken aback that it's going to take a whole nother school year, not this next one, and maybe the next one, to sort of think about what we learned from, on this particular topic, from the, what we did last year under our changes of schedules.
Well, the biggest piece is that if it's not something that's currently in the teacher's contract, is that it would require impact bargaining.
Sure. That aside, I totally understand that. But I would love to share a progress update on what they're talking about or thinking about, or where they are in their discussions.
Sure. So on the table right now is exploring-
I'm not expecting it tonight. I'm just-
Oh, okay.
-just asking in the future, unless you're prepared to, if that's okay. Yeah.
We have put it on the future agenda, and we had actually talked about beyond just this one element, what else have we learned from, actually liked better, you know, things of that nature. At some point, we should folk, you know, have a dedicated discussion via the agenda of what have we, what have we found as a-
Yep. So I had shared at the end of last school year, it was on the agenda, and I had shared that after having experienced several different Bell schedules in one school year, you know, we had started the work in 2019, 2020. We had done a faculty presentation on some possible Bell schedule changes in February, and then the world shut down. So that work had to be moved to the back burner while we developed an interim temporary schedule to get through 2020, and then through 2020, 2021 last year. So I did share at the end of last year that the Bell Schedule Committee would reconvene and use our experience from that past school year. So now, having lived through a couple different schedules, kind of take the best pieces of both and see if we could develop something that worked for us on a more permanent fixture moving forward. So there are a couple of different scenarios on the table. I'm happy to share them at the next meeting, or I can kind of touch base on them now. But at this point, it's a lot of Post-it notes and dry erase board markers on boards. You know, I'm sort of a mad scientist working right now on the schedule. But we're exploring the possibility of an eight-period schedule, similar to the middle school, the possibility of block scheduling, or ideally, a combination of short and long blocks that is a more fixed schedule for students to kind of eliminate the hustle and bustle of a different schedule every day. So things that we have to take into consideration is our CTE program, which requires lengths of time for their periods, the size of our school, and the number of lunches we need to provide, and then staffing needs, obviously.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I would love to see that larger discussion eventually. I would just harken back to maybe something that Summer said in the last discussion, is something I've brought up a couple of times in the past, is that I do feel that we have a system in our school that is very restrictive. And that's great as you're in the younger years, but I think as you get into the older grades, we need to figure out a way to make these kids not, they're great prepared academically, but better prepared for the next stage of their life, which will be largely unstructured, based on either college courses or work schedules or whatever. So I'm looking for something that actually is sort of, I don't know, new age, nouveau thinking in, in how we go about our day, because it is incredibly restrictive for kids who are in 11th and 12th grade. We don't have off-campus internships unless you're in the CTE program. Like, we don't have as much dual enrollment that I'd like to see. Like, I'd like to see more flexibility in how kids function at Silver Lake in their higher years because of getting more prepared for being outside of these walls. And I've said that a bunch of times. And I don't, you don't have to agree with me, but I feel that way strongly, having had two children going through this school. And I just think we can do this more flexibly, while meeting all the state and federal requirements that we have to, and our own goals, of course. But I feel strongly that I'd like to have that impact on our school system. We'll make sure that we keep that on the agenda for future ones.
All right. For school and staff updates, term three will start on January 24th. We'll have an advisory day that day to hand out second semester schedules, and report cards will be issued on January 28. Those are issued digitally through Parent Square. I often say that it's easy to watch the news or scroll social media and lose sense of the good around us sometimes, which is why I'm thankful to be part of a school community that regularly restores my faith in humanity. As Connor mentioned earlier, in December, Student Council and Allied Health donated close to 1,000 non-parishable food items to the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless. Our Red Cross Club packed over 10 giant trash bags full of gently-used or new coats, sweatshirts, sweatpants, winter boots, and new underwear and socks that were donated to local shelters in our community. Our National Honor Society hosted a holiday luncheon for staff and treated us to an amazing spread of soup, sandwiches, salads, hors d'oeuvres, and lots of good desserts. Our students in the Project Lead the Way program have been venturing to our elementary schools to share their love for learning and engineering skills with our younger students. And if you, I'd like to share one of the thank you notes that was sent from a student named Andrew at the Denet Elementary, who wrote, "Dear Mr. Schute, Mrs. Mackey, and Silver Lake students, thank you for setting up those fun activities for us. That was the most fun I've ever had in class. This day was so fun because we got to shoot a nail gun, make the cleanest water, and look at the moon. How is that not fun? I hope you had a great break." From Andrew. I just think it's neat to see, it's neat to have the experience to sort of connect our younger and older Lakers and build that community across our district. It's fun for our kids to be able to share their love of learning. I hope that it's inspiring for our little Lakers and gives them something to look forward to as they get to the bigger schools here on our campus. I wanted to provide you with a senior prom update. Our original venue that we had scheduled our senior prom for on May 20th is located in the city of Boston, and as such, will require a vaccine for all who would plan to attend. So I met with the class officers right before break to review this, and I'm pleased to share that magically, they found a second venue that has availability in May down on the Cape. So we are going to change our prom venue to the Witchmere Club Beach Resort, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Yep.
It's in Harwich. It's right on the water. It's a beautiful venue. They are able to accommodate us on May 26th, so it is a change in date. That is the last day of senior exams. They don't have anything the next day, so they get to sleep in. I told the class officers they need to bring all the teacher chaperones coffee the next day because we have to come to work. But they were able to make that switch over pretty quickly. I'd also like to thank Indian Pond, who, when they heard about this, they reached out to us and connected and offered their venue, and kind of held it in for us for a few days until we knew what our backup plan was. So I just appreciate their help. But ultimately, the kids want to be out of district, and they want to ride the buses, and they want the whole fanfare. So I wanted to make note of that change. We will allow non-school guests and underclassmen who are invited by seniors to attend the prom. Our red carpet will take place as usual, assuming there are no changes from Desi between now and that date. And then staff and student recognition. As you know, each month, we recognize staff and students who uphold our core values of relationships, inclusivity, challenge, and resilience. In December, we awarded the Silver Stars Drama Club this award for their efforts to create an inclusive environment where all students feel welcome to participate, and for the challenges they overcame to perform in front of a live audience while masked. January's recipient will be announced in the next couple of weeks. I'll share that at our February meeting. And then lastly, if you did not know, January is School Board Recognition Month. So I'd like to end my time tonight, and on behalf of Mr. DePille, myself, and our staff, I'd like to extend our appreciation and thank you all for your commitment to our students and district. There aren't many people begging to get involved with any part of education these days, so we'd like to personally thank each of you for sticking around with us through these tough times and difficult circumstances. So thank you for all that you do.
Ma'am, Michaela, one question before you-
May I ask, I'll make a little one question before you. Can you speak to the junior prom?
There is no junior prom.
Right. So I think some parents have spearheaded that and are going to host one for the kids.
So that would be a non-school-sponsored event, so I can't speak to it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. But the school, I just wanted to mention that, like, the school did cancel...
Yep. So we, we shared that last year at school committee, that we made the decision to go down to one prom for a number of reasons. One, the financial shortcomings of classes.
Oh, this is like forever?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed that part. Oh, okay.
Yep.
Never mind then.
That's all right.
I thought it was just this year because of all the restrictions and everything.
No.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
So I'll start just by resonating Michaela's sentiment that she expressed to you guys. We do appreciate all your hard work and all the things that you guys provide to help support our schools and our children, so, especially in these days. So thank you guys for that. It's exceptional work, so thank you. First thing on my list is the Harvard Pilgrim Grant. The mini-grant was awarded and applied to by Mrs. Lewis, grade 7 ELA teacher. She'll be using it for just educational material for her classroom. I guess I'm just looking for a vote for approval to accept that $500 grant.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll make sure that we send a thank you to the Harvard Pilgrim on your behalf, so thank you for that. Next is parent-teacher conferences. We have parent-teacher conferences on February 2nd, February 3rd. February 2nd, we will do them virtually for people, and February 3rd will be in-person. So February 2nd, again, has an hour space for virtual, and then February 3rd, after-school, and then the two-hour evening of our parent-teacher conferences. We also have SPERT, which is a screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment that's coming up on February 15th and 16th. It's a state-mandated program that requires schools to screen students for substance abuse, provides information, also provides support for students and for families. And again, that will be coming up on February 15th and 16th. Providence Bruins have to be rescheduled. We had the snowstorm on the night that we were supposed to go down and sing, so that's rescheduled to February 11th. I'm not sure if I need to ask for another approval for that, where it's been approved, but now the date's changed.
I mean, I think we approved it, the excursion itself, I don't, if you're more comfortable getting a second vote for the change, then have us do it.
No, I agree with you, Paula. We're comfortable, I, you know, the trip has been approved. I just had to change the date for safety purposes for the kids, so. So February 11th will be the Providence Bruins singing "God Bless America" center ice before the game. We also have our talent show that's coming up on February 15th. It's an opportunity to see our students shine onstage. They will be doing that at 5 o'clock on the 15th, and tickets will be $5. We also are bringing back our geography bee and our history bee. Silver Lake Middle School National History Bee and Geography Bee will be running after our brief hiatus. As part of our competition, students will start by competing in a class level, and then the 30 champions from the class level will go in the auditorium and compete for school-level championship, where the top three will be awarded. We also have students that will be taking part in an online exam for the National History Bee poll and for the geography bee.
Bless you.
Bless you. And the top 10% will then go on to regionals, and they'll compete at regionals. And then from there, the top regional competitors will then move on and compete at nationals for the history bee and geography bee. It's really an exciting event. Our students have been doing it for years now. My own son has taken place in it, has gone to regionals, and then went to nationals. It's really an awesome event to see students really extend themselves in that way. So very excited to have that back. I also have is our New York City trip. We're looking to bring that back next year, obviously, for the fall of 2022. So we're looking to bring that back. And then also the Kennedy Space Center trip for the spring of 2023. We're looking to bring that back. And that's obviously been a hiatus as well. So I guess I'm just looking for approval for those two to run next year.
The Kennedy Space Center one and the New York?
Yes.
What, do you do fundraising for them or just throw in the big?
So we do do fundraising for them. So we do set up fundraising. I know it seems early, but a lot of those things need time for planning, for the amount of people that are interested in going. So you have to start by doing kind of an interest thing, because you have to get the numbers together with how many rooms that you're looking for, how many airline tickets that you're looking for, transportation for the buses for New York. I know I'm talking about two different trips. So for New York, it's a bus, so you got to kind of coordinate, get money, things like that. We're not going to coordinate tomorrow, but it does happen in the next couple of months, that they start to coordinate, facilitate how many, and because then you have the summer off, and then October is here, and you would have to have the rooms, the buses, things like that. And the same thing where the summer's off for the Florida trip, and you have to, if you wanted to go down and have it be cost-effective, you have to get the rooms like a year in advance down in Disney, because you're booking a huge block of rooms. And the same thing with the airline tickets, because the last time we took down like 35, and so that's like a big chunk of the plane that you need to kind of book up, so. I just have a quick question. Is Kathy Benash going to do the Kennedy Center? Kathy, believe it or not, has...
She would.
Has told me that when we go, when we are going back, that she would like to meet the kids there, and she has a connection down there, too, where she kind of gets some behind-the-scenes things for our kids. And it's really a wonderful experience, and she does, she did a wonderful job. She's the creator of this event, which Eric is mentioning, and our kids have definitely had some exciting times with, they have lunch with a NASA astronaut while they're down there, and they talk to NASA. The last time we were there, they talked to the astronaut about whether he believed that there was life out there. Like, that was one of their things, as we were going through some of the things that he'd seen out in space. And he said that as a young man, he wasn't sure, but he said with certainty to the, and it was one of our children, that he 100% believes that there is life out there after all the exploration and things that he has seen. So it's really some exciting things that they go down, see and touch, like they touch a rock on the moon, like there's, like a scene of touch thing. It's really wonderful. Anyway, so.
I think to help with the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, the high school principal should really be a chaperone on the Florida trip.
It is a wonderful trip, and kids have a good time, so. So I'll make a motion that we approve both the New York City trip in October of 2022 and the Kennedy Space Center Florida trip in April of 2023.
May I make a friendly amendment? Can we break them apart? Because I'm not going to vote to approve a trip to go to a city where it's restrictive and not available to all of our students because of the vaccine requirements. I'm full-on board with the Florida trip, but I'm not going to vote in support of sending our kids to New York City and not allowing the trip to be an opportunity for all of our students.
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
I would not continue the trip if it was still restrictive and some of our kids wouldn't go. I would not.
If I have your word on that, then...
You have 100% my word.
It's in the minutes.
Well, it is now, but it wasn't until he said that.
Well, I realized that.
I just want it, I want it.
It's okay if you want to split it, though. I'm not saying you can't, but I did want to make sure that, I would not pursue a trip that was exclusive to some students on that reason. In fact, the person who is a schooltime traveler had approached me this year about going to New York back in October, and because of that very reason, I had told Bob Mallon that I would not be pursuing that this year for that very reason, that I would not pursue a trip that was exclusive.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I feel better now.
So we have...
I've made the motion in a little bit.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
So Jim, you should drag my husband Dan into that prep class for that Kennedy Space Center to have him talk about all the stuff he's put up in space and his award that he's gotten from the astronaut corps.
That would be great. I would love to have him come and have a conversation.
I'm going to volunteer him.
He's been voluntold.
I feel like you and I have volunteered him for other things in the past, too.
Yes, we do that well.
But, yeah, he's a wonderful person, and I would love to have him come in and make a note of that.
Right.
And I want the teacher to know as well. I only have one last thing on mine, that's, so we also have a spirit week coming up, 214 to 218. They call it the Week of Valentine, and their theme is to spread the love. They will wear pink, white, red, and they will be spreading the message across our campus for that week, so.
Excellent.
That's it, everybody. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. For tonight, and now that we're here, we've been back a couple of times now in person, I want to share with you some information from the financial. It's in your package for tonight. We have a few instances of deficits that have existed previously in the year, and they still exist. So I just wanted to mention a couple of the newer things that are on the financial. If you go to page four of the details section, about two-thirds of the way down on page, under contracted services for maintenance of building, for CTE, there's a deficit of just under $3,600 there. And what happened is, I'm not sure if you recall, but this past summer, we finished the final floor of the shop areas. We completed that, and when they were there to do that work, a decision was made to do the, the floors that surround that area, so we'd have one consistent service. So, and CTE made a decision to do that, and we would make use of, we would leave surpluses in other areas of the budget to cover that. The other, other area I want to mention is just past that, under maintenance of equipment, there's a deficit of $1,180.94. Just to let you know how that's developed, previously, when we purchased the coffees, we would purchase them on the state bid list, and they would come with three years of free maintenance. The coffees no longer come with free maintenance on the state bid list, so maintenance starts in that year, year one, and we weren't prepared for that as that change was happening. So that's what we're doing to maintain those coffees and to have maintenance on them so that we would have service whenever needed. Other than that, this is the financial, this is where we are as of right now. We're doing pretty well in the financial. There aren't any other areas that are, we're really having some real struggles with. Any areas that I have identified, I've tried to update for the FY23 budget, so that we would be able to address those. I'd have took that time. And that's all I have to say, unless there are any questions.
Quick question. We might have touched upon this in December, and I don't know, the gas for the high school?
Yes. That deficit, this is a projection based on what happened actually last year. And last year was, we had our windows open, and we had our heating system going, and the heating system was running early in the day and later at night. So I have built that into the FY23 budget, an increase for that line to take care of, assuming that's the best information I have, is that the similar conditions will exist going forward.
Well, I just have a question that got raised last meeting during your report, and maybe this will come up with you, Jill, about, we, you had raised the April meeting for Kingston voting the budget when you reported to us in December, and I didn't know if there was follow-up, or if that's something Jill's going to address, then I can table that question, but...
The town of Kingston has changed their town meeting day to May. Is that what your question?
Yep.
Yep, they have changed it to May. So if we vote the budget in our March meeting, it'll be well within the timeframe needed.
Thank you. Thank you for pulling up on that.
I do have one quick question. And I meant to ask it during Michaela's presentation, and it slipped my mind, but it is a financial one, regarding the double-running the buses on the midterm days. Is that going to have a cost impact on districts at all, or?
No, because the middle school has a full day anyway, so the buses have to come back for their dismissal, so it's standard procedure. Yep.
And we do build into the budget a factor for exam day buses.
Okay.
So we're covered with that.
Because the middle school does not have a half-day, but the, okay, so that was already the plan. It's perfect. Thank you.
Yep. They're just going to take the extra step of driving across the parking lot to get our kiddos a second time at 1:58.
Okay. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. To have a quick update about our upcoming Professional Development Day, which is district-wide on Monday, February 28th. That's the Monday after February vacation. As articulated earlier in the year, and in line with our strategy for district improvement, the focus for that day is on two pieces, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and also next steps with our social-emotional learning data. So we're excited to partner with the Anti-Defamation League to provide anti-bias professional development training for all of our staff district-wide. There's a three-hour session for 7 through 12 staff in the, in the morning, and the afternoon component will involve next steps with the practices that educators would brainstorm and want to move forward with, as well as next steps with our SEL data. And the same schedule would work for our elementary staff, except that they would get the same presentation in the afternoon, so that it can be tailored, one for elementary, one for secondary. So we're looking forward to working together with the Anti-Defamation League on that day to advance the work in our strategy for district improvement. That's the update for curriculum instruction and assessment.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. DePille. So I have two brief updates.
Yes, so, so as I begin our district update, I'd like to introduce you to Attorney Du Ferai, Russell Du Ferai. He is Fred's son, and he will be our legal representative moving forward.
Hello, Roy.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome.
And we have worked with Russell on issues in the past alongside Fred and other members of the team, so we're excited to be working with the Du Ferai family and their staff. So that's very exciting news. We're told that Fred is enjoying the time. He gets to check in on Fred as well. Two, two updates for you. On December 3rd, families were sent updated COVID-19 protocols, but the biggest change there was the five-day isolation period, which was highlighted in that, in that memo from the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. And on January 10th, the commissioner extended the mask requirement until February 28th, leading, leaving the 80% vaccination rate as an off-ramp to that requirement in place as part of that memo that was sent out as well. The big item that I'd like to share with you tonight, and originally, we had planned to present for you, but when we changed our venue, we wanted to utilize this space up here. So we will not be presenting visually for you tonight, but in your packet, you do have slides that may be helpful for you as we go through. We do have a preliminary budget for you, and this was, we asked Principal DePille and Principal Gill to wear a level service budget, input from their staff. Over the past few months, we have provided processes for the leadership team, staff, and school committee to engage, discuss potential concerns as well as input from the towns with regards to their concerns about the budget process as well. We've had, I think we've had three tri-town meetings now to discuss capital related items, expenditures. And we also had a joint school committee where our special education director, Marie Gable, and Steve Pello explained their technology-related expenses and requests. Christine also had to make a transition from FY22 to FY23, and began moving over a lot of the data items and preparing estimates from us, for us, based upon this year and past years. So she does a lot of work to get all of that ready, not just for Silver Lake, but for Kingston, Plumpton, and Halifax as well. So it's a huge undertaking at this time of year. In your packet, you will find a budget summary sheet, as well as detailed pages related to that budget. We're going to provide you with some highlights of what to, that we want to draw your attention to, and we're happy to answer your questions as well. This will be a joint presentation, and Principal, Principal DePille and Gill will also be presenting, and Assistant Superintendent Lynch, and our business director, Christine Keely, are also here to answer questions as, as necessary. But we prepared a level service, and what that means is that it reflects what it would take to maintain our current staffing and programs. That's what level services means when we say that. The total budget is an increase of 3.74. Special education transportation, you'll note, there isn't a increase of 21.36%, or an increase of $40,000. This is an anticipated increase. We are suffering from a lack of vendors right now due to the pandemic, and this is a pattern that we are doing our best to try to find vendors that are cost-effective, reliable, and meet the needs of our students. Payroll and benefits represent 82% of the $28,260 million two hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars in this, in the budget. Health insurance for this budget is estimated at five percent, and each percent is twenty-nine thousand eighty-seven dollars. We have adjusted the budget to reflect and account for two known high school retirements, one high school guidance retirement, and one middle school retirement, which reflect approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in savings. Potentially, again, it depends on, um, the hiring and, and the staffing that's available to fill these positions, but this is an estimate. Substitutes, um, we're keeping at the FY twenty-two levels, and the utilities have been updated to reflect kind of patterns, more recent patterns of this current year to the best of our ability to do that. There are some shared cost estimates included, but it does not include any new positions that we presented this night, tonight for your consideration. Um, the office of the superintendent reflects a five point four six percent increase. This line item includes contracts, contract services, contractual obligations, and supplies for an increase of fifty-two thousand dollars. Technology hardware, um, I draw your attention to, that also shows an increase. Uh, there is about thirty-two thousand dollars there that are being, those items were originally in the capital plan, arrow hives and projectors. We are proposing that we remove them from the capital plan and put them in the operating budget. That's where they are right now. Um, grounds and fertilizer, I mention this because the maintenance line shows an increase. Grounds and fertilizer is actually largely responsible for this. Um, that's about a fifty thousand six hundred dollar increase to, to care and maintain and to take care of our fields in particular. Um, homeless transportation is based on a ten-year average, that is also an estimate. Anticipating, yes.
Do you want us to wait to the end to ask your questions, or?
All right.
Or, not in charge.
Um, if you're up to it, it's up to you. Sure, again, they, some things may be answered later on, but if it's related to these items, that I think it's probably best to ask them.
Okay, I just mind with somewhat of a simple question on the substitute line.
Yep.
You know that you're keeping them at the same, um, levels. I thought about two years ago now, three years ago, we talked about it, we had, we did increase the per diem for substitutes from eighty-five to maybe one oh five, is that correct?
To ninety-five.
Seventy-five to ninety-five.
That was, I'm sorry, I knew I was like, it's.
You're in the window.
It's fuzzy. Um, and, uh, I have two questions. Are we going to continue, how does that number compare to substitutes around us? Because I know that we have substitute needs, and then should we consider increasing it? And the second one is, I know we've done, um, long-term building subs, which really helped us get through the last year or so plus of our needs, given everything that was going on under, is that still the same practice that we're going to be doing, and how does that fit into here? I mean, those are pretty minor questions compared to the overall budget, but I was just curious while it was on this page.
So our, our understanding, that I'm looking at the principals, is that the principals have noted the benefit of those positions, and would like to continue to use the substitute lines to help continue that practice or that position moving forward. It's, it's good to have a reliable, um, building-based subs that they can, that they can follow.
Right, and, and they do receive a little bit more than ninety-five dollars. I think their rate, I, I think is one-twenty, is that correct?
It's one-fifty a day.
One-fifty, even better.
For the building-based subs.
Yep. Um, I will say, just to speak to the substitute rate, in my sort of South Shore principals group, we're, we are in close vicinity to what other districts are offering. I think the highest might be like one oh five, but we're, we actually offer more than other districts at this time. The substitute shortage is not unique, unfortunately, to our district. It's all of South Shore, it's all of Massachusetts, it's the entire country right now, unfortunately.
Okay, so this reflects this keeping it at ninety-five?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so the, the next item, we just wanted to speak to, that we, we are, we recognize , uh, the need to continue to support and enrich student learning, particularly with regards to the way that achievement may be impacted by, um, continues to be impacted by COVID-nineteen. We have the ESSER grants that Assistant Superintendent Lynch has reported out on and, and has provided updates for with regards to how that money can be used. In the past, we've used it for summer programming, uh, to atta-, to address potential learning loss and ongoing achievement gaps, and we anticipate that we will offer similar programs this summer. We have our student support teams, we have interventions and interventionists, and we have our curriculum accommodation plans, which I have spoken to the committee about in the past. The big, the big push here is to make sure that our, our curriculum is tightly aligned, and that students have access to grade-level curricular materials and information, and also focusing on research-based strategies to make, um, to support students in the classroom. And we talked about the idea of a growth mindset that's smart is something that you get with effective effort and appropriate support, and making sure that we continue to refine our, our, our resources and our tools in order to support students even during these times. And we talked about accelerated learning, where you talk about what's most important for students to know and be able to do, and to provide more in-depth learning of that subject matter, to make sure that they are meeting those grade-level target skills, as well as content, but really focusing on the depth of the experience, um, to help move students forward, as opposed to focusing on a deficit-based model, and just focusing on what, what students may be struggling with. So we continue to provide interventions, but we also continue, um, to work towards, um, utilizing not only those mindsets, but those practices to help our students and to support them. So we're going to be investing in our, our professional development, in those research-based strategies, but also in curricular alignment, and we want our teachers to play a, a role in that design, because we believe and we know that they are best positioned, um, not a program or a textbook to teach our children, um, but to design curricular experiences for them that can help them to get there. Um, in terms of other notable increases, what I'd like to do is turn it over to both of the principals, who are going to highlight some notable increases or decreases in their budget, and can also speak to the reasons why. So I'll turn it over to Principal Gill.
All right, thank you. Um, so thanks to some significant decreases in areas such as athletic transportation, athletic equipment, um, and due to more online capabilities, um, and guidance of the library, um, the, the decreases and the asks for next year, it balances out to just under fifty thousand dollars in additional funding, um, over last year's or current budget. Um, the most notable increase for next year's budget is related to textbooks, equipment, and staffing. I'm seeking just over twenty-four thousand dollars for new textbooks, um, including those for a new course we'll be offering, AP government, new psychology books, ELA titles, AP stats, and world language books. Um, this is an increase of about ten thousand from our textbook request last year. I'm seeking five thousand in the acquisition of new equipment for wall-mounted display panels. Um, we have several more art class offerings, is a good problem to have, and we'd like to showcase our student work throughout the building, um, but we do need, um, an avenue in which to do it. Blue tape doesn't, doesn't hold it up. Um, and then I have about, um, twenty-three thousand dollars to replace, um, equipment that is dying or dead, um, including a treadmill, an arc trainer, and a stair climber in our fitness center for our wellness classes, a piano for our music classes, and then, um, portable display panels that are over thirty years old and not even on their last leg, the legs are gone at this point, so, we, we need new ones. Um, at this time, um, in terms of staffing, I have three confirmed retirements, um, and actually just in today, two anticipated retirements. Um, the most notable, I think, staffing-related increase, though, are to restore two positions that have previously, um, been cut from twelve months to ten months. Um, in order to return to full capacity, I'm asking that we restore the ten-month assistant principal position to twelve months. This is a position that was cut in two thousand nine completely. It was brought back as a ten-month position in two thousand and eleven, um, and I think it's high time. I mean, I could use three or four assistant principals, to be honest, but I would at least like to make one of the ones I have, um, right now, full year-round position. And then same with our outdoor custodian, it was previously a twelve-month position, the position was cut, I believe it was in twenty twenty. Um, we then brought it back as a ten-month position, um, and in talking with our facilities director, Matt Durkey, um, I believe it's critical that that be, also be restored to a twelve-month position. Um, the assistant principal position, it's, to make it twelve months, it's an additional thirteen thousand dollars. The custodian, it's approximately just over eight thousand dollars, I believe. Um, all of my requests, I believe, align with our district's strategic objectives. Um, we need to improve our structures and processes so that we can focus our efforts on learning efficiency and outcomes. By increasing our admin capacity, we will better be able to support our teachers as they design and implement engaging, standards-based curriculum for our students. Um, and most importantly, I think it ensures that we are able to continue the work in evaluating and improving our inclusive practices here in our building.
Any questions for Michaela before we move on to, oh, I'm sorry, Michaela, yes, you are.
I think, yeah, I kind of jumbled mine altogether.
My question is, these are already in our budget, correct?
Oh, um, Michaela's, um, assistant principal is in the budget, but the.
The custodian, I don't.
Outdoor custodian is not.
Correct.
Okay.
It's not currently in the, in the budget, in the budget.
So the, the thirteen, seven.
Last-minute addition there.
Thirteen, seven is in the current numbers, but eighty-five, fifty is not.
Thirteen is not, it, I still have it at the, the ten-month position, I, I do not have an increase built into this.
But what about the other things, the textbooks and the equipment?
All those are built in, all those other arms are built in.
Okay, so these, I got it. Oh, and it says right there, beyond the level service budget. Sorry, you said it.
But the assistant principal, two, okay.
No, we talked about it, but it.
Yes.
Okay, neither one of them.
Didn't, it didn't.
Did make a cut, I guess.
I, I, I heard that differently, sorry about that.
So neither of those positions are actually in the budget. Is that correct, Christine?
Correct. Go ahead, Chris.
Um, the new courses, do we need to approve a new course?
You do, that's coming. We got a program of studies coming in February.
Okay.
But I do believe we propose, we talked about that one last year at the beginning of this year, um, so I know we were on the right direction to, to get it rolling, because I think we had to approve it last year, knowing we would roll it out and have to purchase those textbooks this year.
Okay.
Because we needed to approve the AP workshop, so I'm, I, if I remember correctly, it was on last year's.
Okay.
I'm following protocol.
Questions for, for Michaela? We can always circle back, obviously.
I did have one question. Sir, just on the outdoor maintenance position, can you remind me, what, what's the current staffing level of the outdoor maintenance?
It's ten months.
No, no, I mean, just.
Number of people?
Yeah, exactly.
Number of bodies?
Two.
And both are, one is?
One is twelve, one is ten.
Okay.
And the months off are the, the winter months, where the grass may not be growing, but the, the snow is falling, things are still breaking, and, you know, maintenance is still required.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. So notable increases and decreases. So first is the, uh, classroom, so teaching supplies, so we have, uh, the Project Lead the Way grants that we had to support our Project Lead the Way classes, and, um, over time, we had reapplied, and we got the second portion, but, uh, after that second portion expires, they expect us to then continue to move forward. And with these, um, classes, they require materials, things like that. So it's not a huge increase, but the four thousand dollars there, and then the professional development for our teachers who are certified in Project Lead the Way have to continue, and that's a, that's the twelve-hundred-dollar increase there. Uh, the cost of, um, guest speaker, so for guides, we bring a guest speaker that comes in and talks about anti-bullying, drugs, alcohol, things like that, and that was the nine-hundred-dollar increase there. Uh, replacement of equipment, so we're looking for three copiers, and there's two ways that we could go about, um, pursuing that. One is to purchase the copiers, but the thing with purchasing the copiers nowadays is that the warranty no longer exists, so even though you purchase them, in fact, when we used to purchase them, would have a free warranty that would exist for three years, so therefore they were covered. Now, when we purchase them, the warranty expires after the first year, and in fact, I think recently now they're saying they may not even last a year, and then you have to buy the warranties for the copiers. So it may make more sense for us to look at leasing the copiers as we move forward, so I included both of that, those for you guys, for your review. And then our SMART boards, the technology for the SMART boards is now outdated, and it's no longer supported. So one of the things we have to look at, especially in our math classes that use those interactive, uh, SMART boards, um, is replacing those. And through conversation with Steve Pello, we looked at doing two at a time, and then we can use the ones that we do take down as parts to support the existing SMART boards as we're going through this three-year process. And, uh, that's, and that's what that number is for, and that's the process that, uh, Steve and I have gone through. Significant decreases, uh, textbooks, so, uh, forty thousand dollars less than last year for textbooks, because we're not looking to replace those studies textbooks this year, or things like that. And, um, software, so the REE 180 cost had came down almost by fifty percent, so that was a six-thousand-dollar, uh, savings there. And then we also have one confirmed retirement, uh, which will be a savings for that. So then, on my sheet, I don't mind, looks a little busier than, uh, Michaela's, to judge it, the proposed cost beyond level service. So the first two really, it's, it's going to sound funny, but, so for the eleven years that I've been here, every year I have to email Christine and Healy and say, is it okay for the power to work per summer hours, this many hours, to do all the data entries for the entire school? And I say the same thing for the nurse to do the data entry. So for eleven years, I'm waiting, and then Christine will email me back, say, yes, it's okay to do that. So this past year, Christine's like, Jim, this is ridiculous, let's do something that makes sense, just put it in the budget. And I said, okay, I'll put it in the budget. It's not a lot of money, it seems odd, but that's what it is, so I'm here saying it. Uh, beyond that, we have, um, athletics, so one of the things that I would like to do is expand our athletic offering, offerings. So we have one team per season, would like to look at expanding it to two teams per season. Uh, one of the things that, one of the things I looked around, for instance, the two Plymouth schools have two to three teams per season for students to engage in, even, and then I checked in Carver, too, and they have two to three teams per season for students to engage in. And for a short, it's a short cost to expand that, uh, but I think it's a notable, um, increase and improvement when you come down to the climate and culture of our building. Every time you have something that a child gets excited about coming to school and getting engaged, making new friends, having new experiences, those are all very positive, positive things that happen within a school setting. So if we can double our athletic programs, I think that would really be a powerful thing for, uh, our middle school. Uh, another thing is, uh, extracurriculars, so, um, the, uh, National Junior Honor Society, I think would be a great experience for our kids while they're here at the middle school, and I put that down there, class advisor, to help support, create different events that are class-related instead of whole-school-related, um, I think would be a powerful thing for them. And I know these aren't big dollar amounts, like class advisor, eight hundred and forty dollars, like, these aren't big dollar amounts, but they do make a big impact, because you're helping children become leaders, organizers, creators of the climate and culture that we want to see in our, in our buildings. And then the last one there is, I put down as a school newspaper, and, um, so I put that down there, too, because school newspaper is a great way for students to get together and have a voice in their own school, their own commentary, and, um, and it also is a academically progressive, uh, club. So moving on from extracurriculars, the next one is a special education reading teacher.
Jim, I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I just wanted to ask you, because you had sent out that survey.
Yes.
And then the kids took the survey, too?
They did.
And I was just wondering if these, um, were the top, uh.
Activities?
Huh?
Activities?
Yeah, that, the response was for, you don't have time.
We had a lot of really great, uh, responses and activities. These definitely were very popular, and I can pull that, that, that data out, too, uh, because I even brought it with me tonight, just in case, we wanted to have a further conversation about what the parents and what the students would say. Um, so when it came to athletics and the extracurriculars, there's a wide variety, but, uh, a lot of them didn't really want, I mean, I think it was, um, I should probably pull the exact number up without saying, saying it, but it was like ninety-two percent of the parents wanted more athletics from the middle school for students to engage and, and be a part of. And I think the, the students' number was like eighty-six percent, and then, when it comes down to, so it was ninety-two percent by the parents. So it was 92% by the parents, and when it comes down to their top ones for parents for athletics, soccer and volleyball were the top two for the parents. And moving on from there, it was tennis, field hockey, baseball, lacrosse. And when it came to extracurriculars, 82% of parents said that they wanted to have more extracurriculars for our students. And 129 of the parents had said Honor Society, that, actually, the newspaper was the top 136, and then Honor Society was the second, and then the class advisors had come in after that. And these are the parent responses. The student responses was 87% wanted additional extracurriculars, and their top one was also soccer. So the students, boys and girls soccer. And that's one of the things you want to be mindful of, too, when you're doing that, that you make sure you have for boys and girls. So that was the top one. And then the second one for the students was volleyball, which aligns with what the parents were saying, as the top things that they were interested in. And for clubs, the top club for students was, did not align with the parents. It was, they wanted class office. So the seventh grade students predominantly want, said class office, and the eighth grade class office was the second top for the students that they wanted. So, I mean, clearly, I mean, I know we have student council, but they do whole-school events. Clearly, some of these grades do want, have voice and leadership in their own grade, in their own events, and help them create that for their climate as they come through the school. So those, some of the, some of that, so I think that's a good question.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah. Okay, so special education reading teacher. So this is a position that we haven't replaced. We left open a few years ago, when our reading teacher had retired and our special education teacher had retired. And what it is, is that we had left that open, and then COVID, then COVID hit as well, so we were clearly a lot of uncertainty. But one of the things is that one of our teams does not have a special education teacher aligned with that team, and that's really one of the things that we do want to look at restoring, is bringing back that small learning community to all six of our teams. We pride ourselves on equity and opportunity with all six. That's kind of an important thing. So I put that down there. Also, I talked to Melissa Farrell, who also coordinates Title I for us, and there's a real need for a reading teacher at the middle school. And she had said that she could, through the Title I, put through half of the cost of that position, because if we had a special education/reading teacher, could also support the reading classes and the students that obviously need reading at the middle school. And then the last bullet is the point five, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just, I remember they cut that Read to Learn class. We cut it a couple of years ago, right? And it was to be replaced with... So I believe the conversation went something like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, when something like, we're going to shift some of that program curriculum into the elementary school so they're better prepared for the middle school and take away that, because I believe the teacher retired. And when she did retire, Melissa made the decision to kind of shift some of that to the elementary so they were more prepared as they entered middle school, as opposed to kind of playing catch-up once they got to middle school? So are we finding ourselves in a position where that wasn't an effective path? And now we're sort of seeing kids come out of the elementary school not as prepared as they should be, reading level-wise for middle school? Is that maybe wasn't the best decision at that time? Or are you seeing the effects of that?
I think it's a really good question, Summer, too, because it's, that is exactly the conversation we had a couple of years back. And I'll answer that in two ways. One is that we have seen it diminish, the amount of students that are coming into the middle school that need reading services.
Okay.
So when we were talking about that, we would see on average maybe like seven-something students that would be in reading programs in the two years at the middle school. And obviously, our ultimate goal is to graduate all students within those two years from the reading program, to be within one year of their grade level, so that they're prepared for the high school. And that's diminished, and this year here, I want to say, and this is off the top of my head, and I can obviously check it and give you an exact number, but I want to say there's maybe like 38 students in the reading program now. So it has diminished, but there's still a need for it. So we used to have two reading teachers, and they both retired at the same time. And what we did is we absorbed some of those reading classes with our special education teachers that have a reading background, and obviously they have a training in reading, too, because they're special education. But what we're really looking for, because that need has continued, where we have like 38 students, is to get the special education teacher that we need, that we left open a few years back, but also have someone that's reading-certified, and that have, that be their primary task, that we hire for that position. So we'd solve two things at the same time, and the cost for us would be half, because half of it could be covered by Title I. So for instance, each of our teams, each teacher has another certification. So some teachers have special education, but they're also certified in math, and they'll be teaching math classes to support our curriculum. And then we also have some special education teachers that teach ELA, because they're certified in ELA. So this would be that in a similar format. This would be their piece that they would bring. So you are remembering correctly, and that's kind of the transitions that's happened over a couple of years, but again, I think this could solve both issues, and again, half of the cost could be taken from Title I. The only thing I do want to make everybody aware is that after year one, Melissa is uncertain about Title I funding, so she's not sure what she can do after the first year, because there's been some flux in Title I, but she did say she could support it for us for next year, if that's something we pursue. The last is the .5 adjustment counselor. We're seeing a lot of needs from our students, especially in our sub-separate programs, with social, emotional, and mental well-being, that they're really, their own health. And they had come in and they did an evaluation of our three sub-separate programs, and they actually came back saying that we needed a psychologist and an adjustment counselor for our students in our sub-separate programs to support those programs. But in conversations and working with the school psych, and also with Regreable, about what we think we can do in-house with what we currently have, that going from .5 to 1.0, we think we can support and still meet the needs of that evaluation that was done on our sub-separate programs. So that's that piece. But obviously, we already currently have a .5 already existing, so we'd go .5 to 1.0. So moving on. So obviously, these things, and I just want to make note, would meet the needs of what we want to focus on, you know, when it comes down to emphasizing high expectations for our students. We want all students to reach the height of their achievement, and we also want to improve our structures and processes and focus on learning outcomes and efficiency, and these things that I'm talking about would meet those. And that's it for the middle school, but whatever questions you guys might have.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. I know this is quite a process over here for both of you to get here. So I'm just noting your bullets on the radar, which are your goals to create, implement, and align an engaging curriculum. I'm just wondering, you know, we do have, and this might affect, actually, the high school as well, but, you know, we do have nine through, seven through 12 coordinators in certain subjects, but we don't have them in all subjects. Is there a movement towards that eventually?
I think in two more slides, we speak to that.
Can I ask one question? So similar to Michaela's slides, the total for this slide you just went through, Jim, is not in the level of service?
Correct. My understanding is that this, the costs on this slide are not in it. The costs on the first slide that I talked about are in it.
Okay. What is the total? I didn't do the math.
73,239, if I added it up correctly.
Thank you.
Is that right?
You are right.
Thanks. I was doing it in my head, and I just couldn't continue doing it.
I'm going to double-check my math.
So this, just for clarification, this first slide with classroom-related, equipment-related, is in the budget. This proposed cost is not in the budget.
That is, that's my understanding.
And this is version one, and for everyone to just recall, Silver Lake goes through a number of iterations in the budget. This is our starting point. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So next, I would turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Proust, who is going to give you an update on our tiered focus monitoring, because it will have some implications. It's just something to be aware of. It has more of a budgetary impact than the elementary system.
So we just finished our, every six years, our programs get checked by DESI for compliance with state and federal laws and regulations. So we were up this year for our English learner education program. So this was, self-study was done during the spring. Thank you to Lana Teresko and Cheryl Key, the ELL teachers in the district for their assistance with it. We spent a lot of time on that in the spring. There was a virtual onsite, so some Zooms, during December 13th to 17th, including interviews. Some materials were also shared with families, families were surveyed as well. So we got the, we received the final report on Friday. In nine of the 12 ELE areas, we were rated as fully implemented. In three of those areas, it is considered partially implemented, so that means that we have to do some follow-up with a, an improvement mapping plan. And in one area of being partially implemented was the program placement and structure. The final report said the district does not have enough ESL staff to implement its ELL program with fidelity, and we, our understanding, as we make our plan, is that that's primarily referring to the elementary level where our kindergarten students, we did not have the staff to fully service their needs. There's 61 total elementary students identified as needing English learner services, K6. At the secondary level, there's 23. So I just wanted to share this information with you about the tiered focus monitoring review. I would say this is, you often have areas that you want to strengthen when the regulation changes. We have a few. As Dr. Proust said, the finding related to placement and structure probably has more implications at the elementary level, but we wanted to share this information with all of the school committees.
I have a question, if you don't mind, before we move on. You said, basically, we have a higher number of students K through 6 than we do 7 through 12. So anyone's question, if a kid comes in in kindergarten and he is identified as an English language learner, would that child eventually not, because they've learned enough English by seventh grade, they're not considered that anymore? Okay. So it's really just people moving in at whatever age that those kids are typically?
Right. And you could have a group of students who need a great deal of support, let's say in 10th grade.
Yeah.
And so you can't always estimate the number of students that you will have. And just because you had a student who started in kindergarten as needing significant support doesn't mean that over time they won't need any support, any additional support from staff such as Cheryl Key or the ELL teacher. So, yeah, it's about achieving certain levels of fluency and comprehension before you can, you don't need certain services.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So, again, I could be incorrect on this, but I believe that this was one of those, like lovely unfunded mandate-type programs that came down from the state. So my question is, do we actually see this as a need in our district, or is this just the state saying, these are our parameters and our guidelines, and you're not checking every box?
I would say these are some of our most vulnerable and some students who have some of our greatest needs. So you can imagine how difficult students, how school can be just for a student who does speak English. Now, imagine a student who doesn't have strong English-speaking skills trying to master the content and not having any other reason other than their inability to access the information that's preventing them from achieving grade-level expectations. So you will see in our sub-separate data that Assistant Superintendent Proust presented, that we do have students who are in these, with low incidence, so it's difficult to capture the data with MCAS, but these are some of the students who struggle the most with meeting grade-level expectations.
No, I understand that part. I just didn't know if this was actually an issue in our district.
Yes, if I could just add that the evaluator from the Office of Language Acquisition, they use the regulation, but there's no sort of formula to say, well, if you have this many students, you need this many staff. And it was, the determination was based on the number of students we have and our teachers, but also interviews with how our ELL programming works. They review all of our documents, so they look at how our program works. Cheryl Key shared information. Lana did, I was interviewed as well, because the Assistant Superintendent coordinates the EL program, so my opinion would be that Judith McGlore from the state has spent that December 13th through 17th learning about our program. So it was based on the numbers, but also interviews in our programming.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I just would like it to be, I want reassurance, that it is district-specific and not just this blanket, everybody needs one of this and three of that, and you know what I mean? So, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
And in fact, just to clarify how it's worked in the past, Cheryl has been, is a Kingston teacher, and because there are so few students at Halifax and Dennis, for example, she would be reimbursed, the town of Kingston would be reimbursed by Plinton and Halifax for her going there to help provide support for those students. But with the growing numbers, it becomes more difficult for one person to help service the needs of all of the students now. The greatest number of students is still in Kingston, in their intermediate and elementary schools.
And I would add that I remember back in 2006 or '07, in Kingston, when we originally started addressing this issue, the numbers were really small then. And I remember this key being involved for a very long time, but the numbers were definitely smaller. So I think that the numbers are growing. They're not huge by any means, but it's definitely more. And I remember this because we were talking about the casino, remember the casino in Middleborough or something? They said that would affect, like, other areas where casinos went in. They usually brought a lot of people from overseas coming to work there, which would then increase this kind of a thing on the, and that was over 10 years ago, I think, when we were dealing with that. So, but I remember our numbers were really small.
And I mean, of course, I want the support system in place for those students and not it be, we're getting our training wheels while the kid's here. You know, I'd rather us be prepared for that when the child comes into the district. I just, thank you for...
So as we are asking you to consider additional staffing positions, and as the, one of our three objectives is the development of this aligned curriculum and making sure that we have instructional leadership in all disciplines, one of the things we ask you to consider is increasing the amount of curriculum coordination and/or leadership, and what format that takes is not limited to just curriculum coordinators, but we are going to work within the frameworks that we're familiar with. In terms of fine and performing arts, it would give us the opportunity to create more opportunities for students either 7 through 12 or K through 12. So if we look at even just the example of surrounding communities, we have two elementary schools, they have the only two elementary schools that we know of in the Lighthouse group that do not offer instrumental lessons by grade five in our school. So, you know, thinking about expanding and creating opportunities for our students through the instructional leadership of a fine and performing arts instructional leader, either 7 through 12 or K through 12, is something we'd like you to consider. History, social sciences, we want you to consider the fact that this is an area with new frameworks, an MCAS pilot test that's going to take place in 2022. Our other MCAS related subjects that are, do have to be coordinated because of the need that was recognized by this district years ago, to make sure that the curriculum is tightly aligned and let students have access to that information. And as part of that, supporting the civics requirement and increasing civic engagement. In terms of special education, when we've talked about our strategy for district improvement, we've talked about the need to make sure that we're meeting our inclusion ratio, fostering a shared understanding of what least restrictive environment actually means, and implementing best practices in our schools, and helping to facilitate the transition between schools. So this could be... So this could be either curriculum coordinator position seven through 12, or we could even examine a leadership of, of an assistant special education coordinator, one for elementary, one for secondary, as another example. Because right now, we, we have an assistant special education director, maybe we divide it up by, by age groups, and it's just another concept of ways that we could promote leadership within this area of need. World languages, we, we talk about creating a more robust seven through 12 approach to language acquisition and potentially English language learner coordination. As you can see, we have, we have two wonderful instructors, but having a content area specialist who could help foster the growth and help identify needs of these students would also be especially valuable. So the cost to go from a department head to a coordinator is about $15,000. Teaching assignments would be the, the coordinator, we would need them to teach two classes. Our population is such that we could absorb the loss of instruction in some of those sections. So we estimate about a 15,000 per leadership position increase, and the responsibilities would include facilitating the development of aligned units, professional development leadership, faculty evaluation, examining and analyzing department-related data to improve instruction. So those are the types of ways that this type of leadership would help us. And then there are two other staffing proposal costs.
I have some questions on that page before you move on. Faculty evaluation, so would these staff members all be, hold like a CAGS?
So they would, they would.
Speak English.
Would they all be eligible to evaluate faculty member if that's one of their job descriptions?
Supervise with licensure or principal's check with licensure in order to evaluate.
Okay.
And you would have to participate in training for evaluation as part of the evaluation system.
And this, would this be internally a promotion among, so it would be, the existing department heads would then shift to that role and responsibility, or outside personnel would be brought in?
It would be posted. It, it could be taken by internal candidates, but it's not, as a new position, it's not necessarily, here's your, here's your new title. It would need to be posted and, and in some cases, I would imagine that department heads would be taking on this increased responsibility. There may be cases where department heads do not want the increased responsibility, in which case the only choice principal may have would, and for the team, because it would, this is something that would affect more than just the high school or the middle school, it would be a team approach, we'd have to have a team set up to evaluate and interview for the positions. But you may have to go outside, or there might be other internal candidates who also would like to be considered for the position.
And the department head position would no longer exist?
This would replace a department head if the department had existed.
Okay. And then what is the impact on the student loads? And I know you can't get specific, but like, that's a lot to absorb. The, the classes are, would that mean other teachers within the department would go from an average of 16 students to an average of 22 students? Or like, how big of an impact is it on other faculty members?
So I can speak to that a little bit, and Jim, you know, feel free to chime in, but currently, our department heads only teach three. They don't have a full teaching load currently.
Okay.
So we're really, we would be looking to absorb one section from each of them.
Okay.
By aligning grade seven through 12, it does present more opportunities to, let's say Greg, or, you know, John, can I pick on you and Greg for a second? Right, so as, as band and music teachers, right? It's possible that with, you know, the numbers that we share between our two buildings, either our band teacher could take on a middle school class, or John Lay could take on a high school class, right? There's, there's opportunity for shared teaching responsibilities across both buildings when they fall under the umbrella of a, of a seven through 12 coordinator.
Okay.
So I, I do believe that if you're asking me to absorb more than one, that would certainly impact class sizes and how we build our schedule, but I do believe we can, we can absorb one with a little finesse.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then finally, some of these talk a little bit about like, in the K to six space, so is any of that like shared cost, or that would just be?
That depends upon, yes, if you're looking at a, if you're gonna look at a position that's gonna span, let's say pre-K through 12, that would be a shared, that would turn into a shared cost position. If you're looking at just seven through 12, that would be a Silver Lake expense.
Okay.
So we just throw that out there to let you know that there are sometimes things that we, we hold ourselves back from considering that may have a positive impact for children because we have a partially regionalized system. And then there are also times when someone who can bring together, let's say, the arts, I, I just use that because it's the first one on the list, and I, and I, I know of that particular need in grade five instrumental and how wonderful that would be, I, I think that that kind of leadership could really help us in, in that area and to help grow opportunities for children.
Thank you.
Chris?
No. I guess, I'm, I'm a little cloudy and concerned on the staffing and cost side. And I'm more going down that line, if the department head isn't the person to fill the shoes and, and do the simple $15,000 additional pay, drop one class, but we need to go outside, does that mean we're adding a full teacher, a full-time teacher coordinator to our staff loads? Or is, would it be a part-time coordinator only? And it would be a $40,000 expense, not an $80,000 expense or something?
If you hired from, anyone from inside, it would be less of an issue because it would be a shifting of FTE.
Right, right.
If you hired from the outside, it could be a flipping of FTE cuts in teaching.
Okay.
That would, that would be the downside.
Okay, that's why I was, I was gonna make sure that.
But we don't know who will apply for these positions, so that is a possibility.
Yes, that's where my budget mind goes. We don't know the outcome.
Right.
To fit it in the budget, to say, okay, well, the promotion scenario didn't work, we now need to reconfigure and drop FTE, and now we need 50 grand. Well, the budget didn't have that, so that's why I'm concerned.
I'm gonna dovetail, if you don't mind, because your question is exactly the one I wanted to ask, I, I just wanna make sure I understand it as well. So if we did have the opportunity to go from department head to coordinator, that person just moves, there's no backfilling of the department head. But if we went outside for the coordinator, somewhere in the pool of FTE, we would be giving up an FTE for that hire.
Yes.
Okay, that, I just wanted to make sure I understood that too.
Question followed then. Is that something we have to negotiate to reduce the FTE within a department? Or we can just do that?
It would, it would be a reduction in force.
Okay, so we can just do it then? Okay.
So I have a few questions on it. The faculty evaluation component from, in the areas that don't currently have seven through 12 coordinators, those were done by the assistant principals or by the principals?
Assistant principals and principals.
Okay, so that, that responsibility would shift then to the new coordinator?
Yeah, I mean, we currently share the responsibility with the coordinators as well, right? It's a, it's a shared responsibility, but that would take a few reports off of our plate for sure, but it doesn't change our responsibilities in terms of observation and evaluation.
What about the assistant?
The department chairs right now are part of all the process with me in terms of unannounced observations, announced observations, we, we do goals meetings, we write, we're writing them together. They would have, they would be the ones actually writing that document now.
And so how would that lessen the load on the assistant principals? Are they?
It would be the same for them. So, for instance, if these coordinators came into fruition, I would have probably half the evaluations and half the observations. For instance, we have math coordinator currently, so I do one of the observations for the math, and he does the other, and then we have conversations about the teachers so that we're on the same page in regards to goals, things like that. So if you then implemented, say, a social studies coordinator, then instead of myself and the AP doing both of the observations, only one of us would have to do one.
Okay.
So it would shift that.
Okay. So if I, Madam Chair, I'm thinking that to yours and Chris's question, I think we need some models run, some scenarios run, that is a minimum impact financial situation if all the stars align and you hired internally. And I think we need a maximum of, you know, if the other situation presented itself. I think that would be super helpful, I think, to know what our potential risk or outlay could be in the situation. I think it's only responsible of us to figure that out. I also am thinking that, I see the benefit of all of this, I really do, but I'm thinking this is a lot to bite off at one time, so I'm kind of thinking we might wanna pick the area or two that we want to start with. For instance, I might suggest history and social sciences because of the new frameworks in MCAS pilot test, but I could be convinced of another direction based on your input or even the special education, maybe for me, I'm not seeing, maybe that's maybe the priority. I just don't know if we'd need to go for all of them at once financially. I'm wondering, we need to have scenarios where we pick one or two for this year and roll it in over time, because I think financially it's gonna be a big, could be a big hit. Or there's other things in here that maybe need to fall off the list that you all have presented, and we just need to have those discussions. Because I, I don't really get a full sense from the presentation of how this proposal or idea, which I raised earlier, so obviously I think it's an important one, factors into the priorities that you have here for the additional outlay that you're, that you're asking for over and above a level service budget? And/or are there things in the level service budget that we could maybe reduce or do without? Because this is a priority. So I just think we need to have a little bit more information, but this is a good start. That's my opinion.
So my question is, I know Halifax is really struggling, and before our budget has even come into play, I mean, I know every year Halifax is having a tough time, but this year, it's like, I know they've been crying wolf, but this time it's a really big bear that's here. So again, it could just, they could vote it down, and it would go to Kingston and Plimpton to, to vote it or not, and then, and I've heard rumblings of, you know, potentially an override in Halifax, who knows? But Kingston, I believe, is looking for a 2% increase per department, and we're already at 3.74 before we talk about any of the extras. So I'm worried, you know, from the Kingston side, and, and I don't know what's going on with the Plimpton side. Yeah, so I, I don't know. You know, I feel like some of this discussion about some of these things may be kind of a moot point unless we are cutting in other places. It may be a tougher year. Obviously, the other thing we don't know is if there's gonna be any other federal aid. I mean, you know, if there's gonna be any other sources of funding from, from the feds at all, or allocated to us from, from the state from funding that we already have, especially where we have such a big issue with, with special education transportation. Obviously, this is a major COVID thing, I think, because there's not many companies bidding on it, and we, we're seeing a huge increase. You know, I would hope that maybe the state allocates some of the funding they already have towards the schools for at least that, to help us out there. But already, we're up over a million dollars, almost 1.1 million, before we even look at the, the extras. So we may need to think as a committee, you know, what we've done in the past is we've gone back and said, okay, can you give us a, a version of your budget next month, you know, going down to X percent? So, you know, I kind of feel like we may, rather than debating all these extras too much, maybe discuss, you know, what, where we probably want to be for an overall percent increase. Because if we add all these other things, instead of 3.74, we might be at 4%, you know, full four. But if the town of Kingston is looking for a two, now granted, we, we have autonomy, we can come up with any budget we want, we can present it, we just may or may not get the blessing from the Board of Selectmen or the Finance Committee, but typically, we get at least a blessing from one of them. It's usually, I think, then the, the Board of Selectmen, I think.
Eric, I have a question. I want to talk about first, I, I have a question regarding.
Go, go ahead, Sheila.
Yeah.
Sheila recognizes you.
Thank you. I don't want, I don't want to, so can, can you just go to, to present? Can you send, can you just keep the budget, other than our budget here on, on Monday night? And we can discuss ELL as well, so put it into our budget, we say, I have a next month, and our next month's coming to, we can add it to our budget. We will over a 3% as well for ourselves. And I was about to, I think it should be, because I just want like to know that Kingston and preschool is very heavily following IUD, but also coming up from those schools, there is a huge bubble coming from Kingston. I mean, probably the biggest bubbles since, since the last, I don't know, like, it was like five years ago, I don't know, you know, two, I think it's graduating, but, because we have trouble with that, I mean, I mean, hopefully to be, I just want to let you know that, 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 check, chairman and secretary and the department as well. But, 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 you know, I know we, we, we have a, but I didn't want to tell you the thing that's happened, because it's coming up, and they have a lot of special, so I want to let you know that, 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 so.
I just wanted to piggyback on what you were saying, Eric, and you're right, it's, it's, the financial situation in Halifax is, is always touchy at best. But I can tell you right now that our wiggle room in Halifax is like $450,000, and the way this budget sits right now, it's gonna eat up over $350,000 left of that, and that's without our elementary budget. And so just the two schools alone, it's gonna force us into an override, and speaking with the Selectmen and, and members of the Finance Committee, granted, we're very early on in the process, but we have the potential of facing like a million dollar override, and we, I think we all know that that's not gonna fly in Halifax. So I think you're right. I think before we sort of start talking about some of the additional things, but also to your point, Chris, is like, and, and Leslie Ann, like, we need to prioritize these things because maybe there's things in the budget that's baked in there that aren't working or aren't as effective as we thought that they would. And the last school committee meeting, we had talked about, you know, different platforms and tools that we use, whether it's homework apps or assessment tools and things like that, that maybe we want to look into shifting around to make sure they're effective for our students and our teachers, but definitely the way this budget stands right now, it's, it's, there's no way Halifax is gonna pass it.
Can we get some insight in the last two ads?
Yes.
There's more.
So the computer technician, I, I know that Steve, Steve Pello presented the number of devices that they've had in service and, you know, increased demand and reliance on, on technology. He was asking that we consider an additional shared cost computer technician. And then the, the last item is a, a new consideration to put on your radar is the need for a human resource director for the Silver Lake School District with the complexity of personnel laws, leaves, things of that nature. We're, we're operating through a, a very lean central office, and this is some, a, a need that the, the district leadership team has, has acknowledged, has been an ongoing need, but communities, towns, schools, because of the complexity of HR, are really turning more and more to this type of leadership in, in school systems because it is such a big job. So this evening at administrative review, I did give the committee, the subcommittee a sample draft job description, just to begin the conversation about that as a, as a, as a future need and something that the committee needs to be aware of.
And I, I just want to kind of share my thoughts in this. First of all, from a personal perspective, we own a family business, so we have to handle HR ourselves. And even on a small scale, it, it's ratcheted up, it's very complex, and COVID added to it, and just changing HR laws have added to it. So I know it's a sensitive thing, it's also the type of thing, if you go astray, you get sued. It's not, you didn't turn this report in on time to some agency or what have you, this is, I will see you in court kind of stuff. One thing I had said to Jill, and one thing I, I believe struck me, is my personal feeling as one committee member is, we run a really big district with a really lean administrative team, and there's so many things we want to do for the children and so many things we should do for the children and the staff, but I can't, I think we cannot forget, should consider as time.
that might come up to $600,000 between the $400 cut plus the $200 additional. And then prioritize, prioritize those items that are in that list because then instead of a $1 million increase, it's a $600,000 increase. And then we'd start from there and add things back in, maybe. And we need to obviously work with the towns a little bit more too to figure out what would be supported and what's not. And if it's not supported, are we still going to go and push for the number that we expect for educating our kids and fight for town meetings?
Leslie?
I'm not, I think we have to do something like that. I am curious, maybe it's published somewhere, I just don't have it in my fingertips, but do we have a knowledge of what our per pupil cost is based on our overall budget to our enrollment relative to what other regional districts in the state are spending per pupil? And I mean, everything wrapped together. I mean, maybe not capital, but I mean, everything in our operating budget. I'm curious about that number because I know costs go up every year because of our level budgets and what it costs to service our workforce and other things. 82% of our budget is currently salary based. There's only so much control you can have over that to a certain extent without making some significant changes in what you want to do versus what you have to do. But I'm still just curious as how we rate.
I think it's on Desi's website. I think there is a per pupil cost.
Well, I think we can calculate it ourselves, right? With how many students we have, we know what our operating budget is.
Right.
I'm just curious what that is because I feel like we have this conversation every year and I know it's a tough conversation every year. And, you know, there's the realism part of it and then there's, we want to, we want to have the best darn school district and school opportunity that our children can have, that money can buy to a certain extent. And I just feel, I feel like we're always just picking away at it. And I know you have some very new ideas, but I just want to understand that a little bit better. So that would be helpful to me before I even said like, go back and find $400,000 worth of cuts. What would that get us? I don't think you can evaluate the quality of an education just by how much money you spend per pupil, but it's an interesting index point.
It is. It is. And I know we, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that usually as part of our assessment presentation in February, once we have all the information from the state, that information is something that's traditionally presented.
Okay, great.
Where we fall per pupil or where we fall compared to similar schools, schools that are similar to us.
Yeah.
Because I think what Eric is saying is, you know, if you want to do all these things, what are you willing to give up to do them, essentially?
I mean, ideally, we don't want to give up anything. I don't. I would go and fight for a town meeting, but I really do, Halifax is definitely going to be a problem. Kingston could be a problem and I have no idea about Plimpton. In the past, it's like Kingston and Plimpton have been supportive and we just had to kind of drag Halifax, but now it's like, everyone's kind of like, whoa.
Kicking and screaming.
Yeah. And, you know, they, remind me, but I don't think Halifax supported our budget last year.
No, we didn't. We didn't. We had to go back and it was quite a fiery meeting. And it just dawned on me as you were talking that I believe our Board of Selectmen have asked our town departments not to level service, but to level fund this year. That's how hurting they are. So it's like, I just, yeah.
But the point is, Kingston is not that, I mean, if they're asking for a 2%, now, there may be wiggle room in Kingston, I don't know. But, you know, we're approaching 4%. So it's just, and again, we could come back next month. If they go back and they make these cuts and they give us a list, we can say, no, we're not making the cuts. We're going with the full amount and add everything. We can do anything. It's just a matter of, at this point in the process, what we've done in the past is said, can you tell us what cuts would look like? And it might be, you know, you're cutting, you're making some class sizes bigger and you're, we're eliminating positions because we are mostly salary. And again, we don't like to do that. We've always tried to avoid it, you know, and I think we would try, try very hard to avoid it this time around as well. But you also can't keep, you know, dropping equipment investments and maintenance. You can't keep doing that. Right, it does catch up. So we don't want to do that forever either.
But are the things that don't, that we don't have control over in that, you know, 18% after the 82%, my God, is that math right?
Yeah, I ask for that on person.
The 18% that we do have control over.
And we really don't either.
We really don't either because.
Because special ed is the number there.
The transportation contract every year, there's only one bidder and they have us over. I swear there's some price fixing going on out there.
Oh, yeah.
So it just seems to me like even if that 18%, there's only certain things that we can control, but, and that puts it back on the 82% that we do have control over. Now, we have some control over that 18%, but not a lot. So, and that puts the onus back on the administration when we've been asking them to do more and more and more and more. And as the state has been asking them to do more and more.
So you, if we go down the road Eric described, you threw $400,000 out and that was just off the top of your head?
It was just off the top of my head. I mean, that drops us down about 1.1%. So it's down to a 2. whatever it is, 6 plus whatever those other things might be that we outgot again. But that would bring us down to about, I think, right around a 2.6% increase.
I'd like, I didn't add them all up, but I wonder what the value is of all the ads or ad asks? Do we know the total ads are? Asks?
I don't know what the HR director would be.
I know what Jim's is because I added that up.
Mine are about 20.
73.
73, so 93.
I thought you said yours were 52.
Yeah.
No, for beyond.
Yeah, no, hers isn't much.
For beyond level service, it's only 20-ish. So it's 93.
And then 50 for computer technician.
Plus 15 times 4, which is 60, right? So 60 plus 93 is?
150, really?
Yep, so at 150.
And then the computer technician, that's 200.
So 200 and then whatever the.
HR director.
HR director is.
Yeah.
Just another 1%.
So 300.
So if we cut 400, but then we're adding in the 300, then we'd have 700 to pick to add back. And that, again, it's just a number.
Yeah.
And we still have, what, two more meetings?
Yes. And we could always, if we want to add one, but yeah, we're together again February 10th. Go ahead.
I just wanted to piggyback on something that Paula said about like the HR director. Like, I know it's easy for us to ignore that, like, it's a new position and, oh, like, why would we create a new position? But, and it's not directly working with students. And I will always be an advocate for us providing as much as we possibly can, but I just think in the complexity of today's legal world and the paperwork and the expectations and the work we're asking administrators then to put on that they're not doing directly with students as a consequence of having to do paperwork that's really better handled by somebody with some legal background and some HR background and more knowledge of that pieces, like, that we keep in mind that it sounds crazy to ask for a $100,000 position when we're talking about these cuts, but like, especially a position that's not directly student-facing. But I just really would encourage us to consider the long-term value of that position and the savings of not paying, no offense, but legal fees to be sued, you know, in, because we didn't just not mail something in or we weren't just late submitting something to Desi, but we truly violated somebody's, you know, legal rights as an employee or, you know, I just, I know that's going to be an easy one for people to say, oh, take that off, you know, it's a new position. But I think there's an incredible value and long-term benefit to making sure that we have proper HR in a fairly large district. And I'm actually surprised we don't have that position already.
Well, if I recall, Madam Chair, I think we have an analysis or we had an analysis at some point in the last couple of years about our administrative staff burden relative to other regional districts' administrative staff burden. And we were certainly on the lower end of what we outlay for our administrative staff relative to other districts. And I'm not, this position might be perfect, but I mean, we know we're in a deficit there already, let alone the fact that the building is going down.
Don't interview them in that building.
So do you want me to make a motion along the lines of what I said?
Maybe just guidance.
I think it's just guidance as well.
Okay. So does everybody agree with like coming up with a list of 400,000 and is that a good number?
It's a starting point. I mean, we'll do iteration two, iteration three, and we'll do more if we need to.
So I would say make a list of the ads, the $300,000 of ads, but then add to that $400,000 in cuts from the budget wherever we think we can find them. And it could include savings that we see in reduced costs because I know that happens the next go around.
Right, because right now we have a lot of estimates. There are things that we don't have concrete information on. So those may turn. For instance, health insurance, we may get better information that will help give us some guidance on what our next step is and that can make a difference.
So that would be a cut without making the cut?
Right.
So if we can do that, you know, come up with those items and then put them in a priority order that you all believe, that you all think the priority should be. And then we can meet again and get more information from the towns as well.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done this before.
Yeah, it's like groundhogging.
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a good starting point.
Okay.
You mentioned that you see most of the school staff.
We can push the on agenda, I think. Yep.
Silver Lake. You know, I started tonight and I didn't have a lot to say and now I have a lot to do. So first of all, echo what McGee and Jim said, you know, I know we've been paying for this job, we've been doing this for almost years. And I just want to say that we appreciate all the time that you give to our kids in these communities as well. And also thank you for your flexibility with the exam issue with the high school. I know actually I've already spoken to that since that's something that teachers at the high school supported. So I think that's going to be a good solution. And, you know, I agree with what was said too, what I said with the members about, you know, being thoughtful about how we go forward with it and looking at it and looking at the future. You know, so when the budget was first discussed, I thought it sounded pretty good. And I started to write at it. That's all right. You know, I guess what I'd like to do is maybe advocate for a couple of things. You know, obviously, I'm just hearing about a lot of this for the first time now and I haven't spoken with my colleagues about it. So I'll speak and talk to them a little bit later. But, you know, as the administration goes and looks at some of these things, probably I'll be sharing some of the ideas that I know other people have talked about too. So one is that, you know, the middle school special ed position, I really think it's key. I know that our middle school special ed teachers have really felt the burden of being one person down. So I hope that we'll be able to remain safe. I'll be selfish here for a minute and talk a little bit about the music program. You know, I was kind of a union physician. I was actually hired almost 20, getting towards 20 years ago now at Silver Lake High School. I was actually right before the Pembroke split. And we had over 100 kids in the high school band. And when the Pembroke split happened, Pembroke assumed that they would have half those students. And Pembroke did not have any elementary instrumental programs. And there were 16 students in the Pembroke band. When I went over there, I talked with the first year of resistance. And they immediately recognized what the problem was. They had K-12 coordination and they put programs in the elementary school and now they're the school with the band of 100 kids. And, you know, I certainly reach out to my colleagues in the elementary schools, but there's no band at all in Halifax, there's no band at all in Plimpton, so it's tough. And, you know, it would be great to have that coordinator with music. You know, it's something that makes a big impact to students. I don't know if you guys have ever seen the research on it, the general speaking, the kids weren't music or someone goes, "Happened to them?" We give the kids. There's something made about where the causation is. It's because they're gravitating toward the music, helping them. But at any rate, I do think it would be a great experience to be able to offer to more of our kids. And I think that having a coordinator would help to make it happen. So that's just me selfishly sowing my program. But I'm the union president. I just like to say whatever I want. I have just to echo also what was said about the EOLs. Definitely see so many more EOLs now. And I know.
I'm glad to see you, John.
So yeah, so what kind of thing, Leslie Ann, I appreciate what you asked about the substitutes. You know, substitutes happen at issue and, you know, Sheila's obviously right that we're not doing ones that are substitute substitutes. And, you know, are they going to come here just because we're offering five months more a day than anyone? Probably not, right? But I do think it might be valuable to look at maybe including the gaining more substitutes, maybe seeing if there's some kind of purchase to talk with them that other towns work. Because it does make a big difference. A lot of teams with the middle school, for example, do have to cover when they're supposed to be doing other duties. It takes away what they're supposed to be doing in proper classes. And so if we could get more subs, then we're really good with that. So thanks a lot. And we really do appreciate it. Everybody do.
Thank you, John. Okay, Administrative Review, we did meet this evening. We do have some shared cost contracts that need to be reviewed and discussed. And additionally, the human resources director that Jill presented to us tonight. So we have a joint meeting on February 12th, is it? Sounds around that time.
I think it's the 10th.
The 10th is Silver Lake, but it's before it is in Atlanta. Okay. There's a joint meeting before the Silver Lake meeting on the 10th that we're going to need to talk to, talk about some contracts. We, that'll be part of the executive session. Okay, CTE.
No meetings.
Okay. Chairman's report. I have no correspondence that you're not aware of. The only thing I wanted to mention to you is I was out on the Mass Association of School Committees website. And what brought me to go into it, I haven't been on for a little bit, was we got a letter in the mail talking about some learning lunch, lunches, that series they have. If you go out there, there's some interesting topics out there and they're recorded. So if you can't make them live, they're available at your discretion to watch. So I just wanted to mention them. They, they got some good topics out there. Jason's not here to give a legislative agent's report on negotiations. We have a executive session immediately following this meeting. Pat?
Yes. So there was supposed to be a meeting on January 6th. It was canceled. There was a interim report and audit issued on the 10th of January. And some of the basic updates that the director sent, and I share with you, is that their enrollment is steady. They've received $52,000 of ester funds so far. They're expecting or have the potential for another $200,000 in coronavirus aid. They are, we, I should say, are prepping for teacher negotiations with the support contract last year. They're doing staffing evaluations and probably the biggest thing is they're going to enter into strategic planning starting in March. So, yeah, they're. Okay? CTE.
No meetings.
Okay. Chairman's report. I have no correspondence that you're not aware of. The only thing I wanted to mention to you is I was out on the Mass Association of School Committee's website, and what brought me to go into it, I haven't been on it in a little bit, was we got a letter in the mail talking about some learning lunch, lunches, that series they have. If you go out there, there's some interesting topics out there, and they're recorded, so if you can't make them live, they're available at your discretion to watch. So, I just wanted to mention them, they got some good topics out there. Jason's not here to give a legislative agent's report on negotiations. We have an executive session immediately following this meeting.
Yes, so they were supposed to be a meeting on January 6th, it was canceled. There was a, in a report, an audit issued on the 10th of January, and some of the basic updates that the director sent, and I share with you, is that their enrollment is steady. They've received $52,000 of ester funds so far. They're expecting or have the potential for another $200,000 in coronavirus aid. They are, we, I should say, are prepping for teacher negotiations, we had a support contract last year. They're doing staffing evaluations, and probably the biggest thing is they're going to enter into strategic planning starting in March. So, yeah, they're, unfortunately, they try to be hybrid, they try to meet the person, and I think they just are so overwhelmed by the return of classes that they can't afford it.
Thank you. Policy. Revolving funds, no meeting. Safe.
Yes, another tri-town meeting this week. I think it went well, we've got some things moving forward. Just to give everyone an update on sort of the multiple fronts that we're dealing with. One is the Silver Lake HVAC system. We're trying to move that project forward and trying to figure out how the towns can support us on that through the ARPA funds. It does sound like we can figure that out, I'll return to that one in a second. We talked about the district stabilization funds. I think it's a somewhat of agreement that we move forward potentially with an article, again, just to open the funds at the three town meetings, so get on the warrant there. Again, if you recall, the stabilization fund, and I have the general law guidelines, is a capital plan stabilization fund, so we are very restricted in what we can use those funds for, but we're not asking for any funds. We're asking for opening account. So, that was one discussion the towns didn't seem to object to. I think last year, we just kind of shortened them and got them off guard. The tennis courts, we keep circling this one, not really making a whole lot of progress here.
Ball, ball.
Yeah. Matt got, you know, some information and asked about in terms of quotes that we've talked about and seeing if the costs are realistic, because some of the towns are concerned that our quotes last year were a little stale. Through his research, again, it seems like the Activitas quote is still somewhat valid, and if anything, on the high side. So, and that's kind of the general trend with what Activitas does, they're very conservative in their pricing, so they tend to be overpriced in their estimates. So, the numbers haven't changed, the condition of the court has not changed dramatically. Matt did say the cracks are starting to reappear a little bit from last year's efforts just to seal them. So, we're looking at the two options of 126 grand for a resurfacing, and the full cut project costs are about 340. Following the stabilization fund, it sounds like this might be worthy of going again on a warrant article to the three towns and see what they say. I don't think we really have another solution. Issue I kind of keep raising, and you've probably heard me say this before, is we won't know how bad it is until the spring, after the winter ice and then snow and everything, and it reappears. And that might be March or April, which is almost too late to then get a warrant article in for May to then get funding that next year. So, almost, if it's really bad this spring, we could almost end up in a bad scenario of waiting until 23's town meeting to make the request again, not really knowing if it's going to be a yes or a no. And Halifax, obviously, in their financial situation, I wouldn't make a guess which way they want to go on this. Their allocation is not horrific, but it's 38 on the resurfacing and 104 on the reconstruction. Oh, question behind me?
No, I think we, I have one gentleman. We resurfaced it.
No.
This last year?
We patched it.
We just filled the cracks.
We patched it for about 15 grand.
Oh, yeah, no.
Which was, I guess, like putting some putty in the cracks like you would.
And some of the cracks are back, but not as bad as before.
Yeah, and they were inch-wide cracks, and they were deep. They were, put your fingers in six inches through the multiple layers, so that's why it's not a repair, it's a patch. And we probably have to do it again in the spring for 10 or 15 grand. I wouldn't even be shocked at all.
What you're saying, to surface repair, it's 126, and for like double that cost, or no way, it'd be triple, I guess. You can redo the whole thing.
126 would be sort of crack repair and resurfacing.
Do we know how long that might last?
Well, the current test court was, is the original, and it's been 15 years, I think. I don't think the resurfacing has any real guarantee of how long it lasts.
I think the resurfacing is like five or six years, I remember.
I was going to say three to five, because we still have the, sort of, the fundamental base cracks that are so deep.
Yeah.
They're just going to reappear.
Yeah.
That's why I think, in my opinion, the 340, rip it up.
I just don't see the point.
Start fresh.
In resurfacing, if we're going to have to replace it in five years.
Yeah.
It's going to be double the cost probably to replace it in five years.
I think I agree, and that's where we kind of put a warrant article out there for a full reconstruction.
And it shouldn't come as a surprise to the towns, honestly. I know you made the comment about Halifax, but I mean, we kind of argued that on town meeting floor for a while, Paul, if you remember, the tennis courts.
Right, well, I truly believe one of the smartest things this committee did to share was start the tri-town meetings. Full transparency, there is no surprise about our capital needs. So, even though the population that attends any town meeting may not have attended or watched or whatever, you have us, the selectmen and the finance committees, town administrators, town accountants, who are fully briefed on all of these items. I truly believe it is one of the best things this committee has maybe ever done.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the transparency is great, and I think one thing that we all need to recognize, and we need to keep preaching this, I guess, is we don't get capital plan support from the towns. You know, each town has a million dollars or half a million dollars of capital plans they execute on, but we're not part of it. And I completely understand why, because this tri-town meeting thing is exactly why. One town may have funding one year, and the other towns have funding the next year, it would probably be almost, I say painful, to coordinate three towns having item number five on each of their capital plans to be Silver Lake, for a Silver Lake-specific project, like a tennis court. But any time capital plan comes through right now for us, and we have a $340,000 item, it sort of chokes the rest of the plan, because we only have that 500 to 600 sort of range that we comfortably, comfortably as a safer committee at this point, spending. We always spend a little more, and it's been all our E and D, but then we have no reserve at all. So, that's also probably a warrant request for the full, but we can all discuss that too.
So, $340,000 for a design life of about 15 years, throwing that out there, it's about $23,000 a year that we would amortize or pay for, and, you know, it's about the cost per year of it on average, which on the, on the one side, doesn't seem so bad, because you pretty much replace the whole thing, and there's not a whole lot of maintenance to it when it's laid, right?
Probably painting.
That's painting.
Yeah.
On the other side, part of me feels like, should we have a discussion about not having tennis courts? And my thought is, we don't have a pool, and I know why we don't have a pool. And we use the Kingsbury Club for the needs that we have for our swim team. Could we use something like that for the needs of our tennis team? Now, I know we use those courts for things like PE and other things, but I'm just sort of wondering if we need to have the, we need to flush out all options before we put out the 340K. I could see $23,000 a year for tennis courts if it's benefiting, you know, every student equally through PE and the tennis teams. But if the majority of the use is the tennis teams, then we should consider an alternative private scenario. I just want to throw it out there.
The majority of the use is not the tennis teams.
Yeah.
It is, it is the PE and other such things. I don't disagree that things like swimming, we use third-party vendors. I think the approach is to maintain the facilities here, from my standpoint, you know, see what the towns say on a warrant article to replace them. If the towns decide to say no, they could be removing a service from our schedule.
Right.
And I don't feel good about that.
No, I don't either.
But I don't have a solution, and it was indicated not to take a bond out for this, like you said, 20-year bond, but maybe take a larger piling of other capital projects and create a larger bond to encompass, you know, a million or two million.
Right.
And then, again, we have to get approval from the towns for that $2 million in total bonds for tennis courts and this and that and whatever. We didn't get into this at our one-hour tri-town meeting of what else we could kind of pile in. I think our next safer meeting, we can come back to our zone stuff and see where we stand, because we did have a couple of new items pop on us internally.
Right.
And see if we really feel the need to put a big bond out there and say, okay, here's a million bucks, we're going to do it over 10 years, and then, you know, we have an easier way to find, fund it.
Right, because I firmly believe that we should have, you know, equity for our students who want to participate in the activities. I mean, I know that a lot of folks come to our facilities, our outdoor facilities, and they're just, wow. I mean, they are in, for the most part, in like fantastic shape. I mean, my, my brother's daughter plays Pembroke softball, and he's like, "I'd kill for your softball complex", you know? I get it. I think that's one aspect that we, if we're going to do facilities, we're going to do them really well outside, then we should do them for all students who want to use them. On the flip side, maybe there are some that we just shouldn't support at all and do it in a third-party fashion. And I'm not advocating either one, I'm just saying, I think as a school committee, we, it's our fiduciary responsibility to have these discussions.
Yeah, and this tennis court has been sort of the test case of we can't contain it within our walls to get it funded.
Right.
I think the track, to my knowledge, might be the next other big thing if we need to rebuild the track. You know, that, I think, is projecting the capital plan at something like 700,000 or something for a rebuild.
Who one is that?
That's way out. Let me see what it is.
Because like a track, I couldn't foresee third-partying out. Tennis courts, I see your point.
Well, Kingston's tennis courts are closed, so those aren't available.
Yeah, well, those are just not good anyhow, like they're leaning.
Well, they don't have any, Kingston, they have them in Plymouth and Halifax? Or are you saying we have to go internal, or inside the Kingsbury again?
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where tennis courts are, the town doesn't have too many.
We should take over the people who are caught tort in Duck Spray, that used to be used every day. That used to be tennis.
Yeah, so 660, right now, we have 200 to do a resurface or 660 to replace. The resurfacing right now is in the 2023, 24 year, so not far out.
No, it's not far away.
It's not far away. I mean, at 200, it's more manageable internal, but again, when we look at what the project is going to be, we may uncover the same thing with the tennis courts. We can resurface it, but we can replace it three or four years later when it actually does fail in whole.
That's why the stabilization fund is so important, even if it's open with $0 and or thinking of alternative financing solutions.
It could help eventually, but if it's other town pools that are used for a later project like OPEB, we get $100,000 a year into the stabilization fund, well, we still need four or five years to get to a project that we're trying to cover. And that's sort of my point is, we're going to have a track, we could have a track in three or four years, maybe we can get a stabilization fund, and maybe we get $200,000 or $300,000 in there. That helps, it at least helps, so we don't have to go to the town like with a tennis court today and say, hey, fund our tennis court or watch it fail, and when it fails, we'll come back with the same request. And if they fail it again, we are stuck in a facility that's not functioning, because again, we're not on their capital plan. So, that's, I'm sort of venting a little bit here, but those are two big things we talked of. Didn't really discuss too far down the road of Silver Lake admin building, but we did get a preliminary feasibility study done in terms of the scope of the work that we would need, and from Doran Whittier. Doran Whittier, yes, Matt Durkey got this for us, and I have the whole scope here and everything, and it was about a $30,000 total cost, 28,750. So, in order to evaluate and assess what the admin building options are, expand the space, fix the space, replace the space, those kind of things, and the first step was doing this $30,000 feasibility study. And again, this will probably get discussed in our next safer committee capital planning, see if we can fit it in, or see if there's other sources of funding, such as a warrant article again, and have the three towns pay their 8,000, 16,000, and 3,000, yes or no? Because it's just, it's getting that tight in the capital plan, so.
Yes, no, room and eat, easy.
That's capital plan, yeah.
Yeah, there's no.
If we fill that whole list, we'd have nothing left, so we've got to watch out what we have reserves. But I'll have a better report for that next time. Any questions on this as a next step? I think, Jill, you agree, this is what we've got to kind of, to get the bomb rolling, I think, finally. The last thing, which is probably the one I'm so excited about, and we're actually more progress on, is the HVAC. So, I mentioned it up front, and I was going to circle back. Excuse me. So, Matt put a little proposal in a one-pager, and it came to about 1.55 million dollars, so a minute and a half approximately, which is the 70 spaces at the high school to AC, 49 spaces at the middle school to AC, getting it all done as we sort of dream about, so to speak. Based on the 22 assessment, the cost per town, Halifax is 30.7%, which is 474,929, Kingston's 57% at 884,884, and Plymouth's at 187,187. So, the snag that we sort of discussed and trying to make this go forward, one, there's not enough ARPA allocations in phase one from Plymouth County to fund those three percentages as I listed, but we got a solution on that one. However, we don't have a solution as to how to get the construction design documents done, right? This isn't going to, this isn't going to be good enough to go to bid, what Matt put together, right? We need a little bit more complete assessment on the design work. So, he reached out to Elevated Design, Inc., and he said, again, it's a $29,150 proposal for technical services from them on our mechanical HVAC and so forth. We need to find the 30 grand to get the project started. The possible good news, again, I'm full of good news here, is we may be able to access the $210,000 that was approved in the budget for the Silver Lake HVAC last fiscal year at the state. This was obtained first by Rep. Kathy Lenatra. I'm trying to figure out where the money is, and if we can use it for something other than the pure construction costs, because the design is something we need. If not, then I've got to go to Christine and see if she can find the $29,000 somewhere in our budget, right, for this year. Or, option three, put it in the capital plan and wait till July 1st to start the design work.
What about option D?
Another warrant article?
Nope. Because I do this every day at work, is design build, if you can find a design build firm, because then it's considered designing and construction.
I don't know, because I think we have three bids to go for, is that correct?
We would have, we would need documents to go to bid, and then we would have to go to a public bid for this project.
We need this work to get the documents to go out to bid, I think.
Yeah.
This isn't, this isn't going to cut it.
No, 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 you can do design build, go out to bid for design build.
Can we do that?
I have no experience with that.
I think in the public sector, you can't. I'd have to look for sure, but I don't think you can combine them anymore. I think at one time you could, but I don't think they allow it.
I think DCAM has an option for it.
Yeah, I mean, I could check, but I'm not sure in the public sector.
No, that's, I love the input, I'm not aware of that, I'm not a construction guy. So, if we can get the answer from Kathy, I think we can get a start on this, and then we can approve, I think, through this committee to spend the 29,150 to move forward. So, that's part of the good news. My last piece of good news with the ARPA in Plymouth County, in talking to Tom O'Brien, while these three towns don't have their allotment to this 1.5 estimated cost, we are allowed to overspend and encumber the next phase of projects. And I'll say, we, we can't do anything, remember, ARPA funds are for the towns, the towns are each able to overspend to the next allotment that hasn't been released, but only on a large project, okay? So, if they want to try and do seven projects to blow through their number, he's going to say, okay, well, five fit, and the next two don't, the next two wait. Yeah, so he said we could do this, which again, means the tri-town meetings are so important, because we need to get the three towns to support on the same schedule to get this ARPA submission in and let Tom O'Brien process them sort of at the same time. And to do that, we again, need this $30,000 plan design for them to submit to ARPA and so on and so forth, crisscrossing back and forth. So, any questions? All right, then I'll make a motion. May I?
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we allow the Silver Lake School District to expend the $29,150 for plan design with, which is this company, Elevated Design, Inc., if it's available through the funds allocated with the State House from Kathy Lenatra's prior bill.
That's a safe motion.
Do you, would you want a friendly amendment to say, or if it's available in our current year's budget?
I'd be okay with that, I don't know where it's coming from, that's more their work, but I was just going to see if we can spend Kathy's money that she's allocated, we do that to move it forward.
And then Christine says, oh, I found some money, then we'd have to vote again, right?
I'd be happy with Christine for doing that.
I'm just thinking, the capital plan, what, we know one of our projects is coming in less.
Okay.
So, I'm just wondering if that, that might be, end up being an opportunity.
Okay, I'll take the amendment.
So, should I just, you know, limit it to the budget as another possibility, so it's maybe where, as funds are available?
As the funds are, have been saved in last year's capital plan, something of that sort?
Or the current budget.
Or the budget, okay. So, I'll amend it to be priority spending from Kathy Lenatra's designated funds at state out of the 210, or if unavailable there, through our current budget.
I'll second that.
Are you, oh, go ahead. So, this firm that he brought to, was there, was there a qualms package requested from companies? Like, how do we know if these folks qualified, can do this work versus somebody else we might hire? I mean, this is such a huge project, that like, you don't want to pick a designer that you don't have any experience with, don't know, didn't know. with, don't know, didn't evaluate other designers.
Matt has actually reviewed several different options from different companies. And this Elevated Design is the company that Town of Halifax is using for the project that they've started. So he's, that's where he's experienced data with them. And he's done some research beyond that. He's also checked out some other companies.
So I guess he has done work with them.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay. We have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Hi.
Great work.
Thank you. That was it.
This is like tangentially related, but like.
We could do that because.
Does having, like, why are we only regional in the middle in high school? Like, it seemed, I know, I know, I know. There's probably, but it just seems like.
I got to go. Listen, you guys.
It's past my bedtime.
I'm going to give you the short answer and then I'm happy to check with you.
Okay, yes.
I think, I have been on school committees now, excuse me, I'm chirping up the HHS. In, for a total of probably 20 years, 19, 20 years. I think I've gone through two iterations in that time of regionalizing K through 12. Excuse me. I put it down the wrong way. I personally think, and there's a lot of people that do, that's the way to go. Because this is, we would be so much better in so many ways. Both times we looked at it, it, like it was a failure to launch kind of thing. There's a, there's a, there's a lot of factors. I can talk to it like about them, but both times beyond a study committee being formed and giving pros and cons and suggesting that we probably move forward, it's gone no further.
And the biggest thing, I think, because I've been around for a while when we've had discussions, is the priorities are different with the towns and the financial situation. So right now, 7 through 12, we are beholden on at least one other town agreeing with our town, right? And like Halifax is having a really hard time. They, you know, more often they are than they're not. And Kingston doesn't want to tie their K through six and Plimpton either. I mean, Plimpton, I think, is doing a whole lot better financially and they have really small class sizes, you know. And, and I don't think they'd want to, you know, regionalizing means maybe they close down the, the Plimpton school and they're combined in with Halifax and they don't necessarily want that. I don't know.
Like the custom little cute banner. You're right. If they cherish that community there.
When we separated from Pembroke and we built and designed the middle school, we actually wanted the middle school to be the true middle school concept, because we have consultants come in and everything. The true middle school concept at the time, and sometimes gone by, was six through eight. It wasn't just seven and eight. And Kingston in particular would not buy into that. First of all, you had just built or you were just building your.
KIS.
KIS. And then the thought process was down the line of Kingston becoming the new Pembroke and being 50% of the student population ever left the district. You know, they, they didn't want to see, you know, more building and, and what have you than, than really needed to be. But, you know, in a perfect world, K through 12, Christine would have one budget. She wouldn't know what to do.
One school committee.
Oh, one school committee.
Jill and, and Ryan wouldn't know what to do with just one set of school committee meetings. They would, Jill would be vacationing. Russell perhaps would be out of a job to get to our school district because, you know, in a perfect world, my God, but, okay, I.
But can you imagine just one union?
I rant. Marie, I know.
Thank you for that. Sorry.
You're welcome.
So much of it seems chilling.
It does make sense, but there's so many Roblox.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And financially, like, we talked about having to cut stuff and what could we save if we shared other things instead of sacrificing.
Well, and I.
And crossing.
Yeah, I mean, just all of it. It seems like there would be more opportunities for students.
My kids were little, little when Pembroke, I would call it a divorce, from Silver Lake. And it was, it was complicated. And, I mean, John can attest to it, staff going one direction versus the other and some of them paid more than that. I mean, it was.
Oh, yeah.
It was messy.
Messy. Messy. And I think it was messy for.
Years.
Oh, yeah. Like seven or eight years, not like the year or two that it happened. Because we still had connections with them for a very long time that we still had to sort out. We still do take their CTE students because they don't have a CTE, which is a good example.
For sure.
But it was ugly.
What was sort of, and I won't speak any longer to this because we're distinctly, but when you split a school system like that, when people went into it, they sort of thought, okay, we're going to take 50% of the cost and you're going to be left with 50% of the cost. But you don't split a superintendent. You don't split a Spanish teacher. You don't, there's buying and selling of buildings and properties and everything.
Chairs and computers.
Yeah, that was my first experience, I think, volunteering for the town was the, the Pembroke separation.
And Pembroke still had Silver Lake hurdles for their track. They took some.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
I saw them over there.
Okay.
Sorry. We win the trophy every year. That's all that matters.
Summer has that.
I do. Total accounts payable was $876,766.64. The total payroll was $1,720,248.75, bringing us to a grand total of $2,597,015.39. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Union 31 will be meeting in February. Okay, warrants?
Single signature warrants. I do have a report on that. On December 10, we had 23 warrants that were sent out for electronic signature to Superintendent Jill Crew, Chairperson Paula Hatch, Eric Crowe, and Summer Schmowey. All warrants have been signed and returned. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Future meetings and important dates, January 17, Martin Luther King Day, no school. February 10, our public budget hearing and the joint meeting. February 21st through 25th, winter break. And February 28, in-service day for the teachers. Now, if I could have a motion to go into executive session, not to come back to public session.
Can I add one more meeting thing real quick?
Oh, sure.
Safer's having a meeting on the 3rd of February at 5:00, in case other non-committee members want to join and be a member of the public audience.
Perfect. Thank you. We should have that on there.
I'll make the motion for executive session, not to return.
Okay. Can you read the, the little script?
Yes, yes. Not to return to public session for the MGL C30A, A3, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contract negotiations.
Second, that was me.
All right. I'm going to roll call. Yes, Eric, Summer?
Yes.
Yes.
Leslie, I guess myself as a yes. Thank you, folks. We'll go back to the guidance council.
Five minutes.